Fifty Indigenous Engagement and Inclusivity. The Federation of Students acknowledges that the University of Waterloo is on the traditional territory of the Neutral, the Anishinaabe, and the Haudenosaunee peoples. The University of Waterloo is situated on the Haldeman Tract, land promised to the Six Nations, which includes six miles on each side of the Grand River. We'll move to approve the agenda for this meeting. So be it resolved that council approve the agenda as presented. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Nada. Are... So, sorry, everyone. Were there any amendments that need to be made to the agenda? We only have the one general order, so I think we're good to just move on. I'm not hearing anything, so I'll move on to General Order 2.1, the Ontario Police Services Funding. Megan is the mover. Can I get a second?
I'll also second that.
Thank you, Nada. Megan, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, please. So I've prepared a quick presentation for council, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page, as I know we have a number of members at large with us today, which is awesome. So this is the one and only item on the agenda titled Ontario Police Services Funding, submitted by myself. So for those who don't know me, my name is Megan. I'm the Vice President Education, and I use she/her pronouns. And this presentation is in collaboration with our RACE coordinators. So first off, I'd just like to start with an overview of how advocacy works in the organization. There's four main steps, as I like to think of it, which are issue identification, development of an advocacy position, approval of the advocacy position, and taking action on that advocacy. So here today, we are at step three of this process and looking to approve a position that the executive have drafted and that was identified by a number of our Black students through consultation, as well as through work with RACE and our AVP Equity. Just to give some examples of how this usually works, this is a number of things that I have worked on so far this term, and I will send the links to these slides out so that people can kind of peruse some of the other advocacy topics that specifically my portfolio has been working on. Next, I'd like to give a background on what happened and why we're here today. So in alignment with our annual plan, we've been developing a racial equity advocacy strategy, including work related to the police. So when WUSA was approached for quote on an article, we submitted the following quote about the reallocation of police funding towards other social services, and then that was published. And so it was the executive's intention to kind of give this quote in the interim while we were waiting for a council meeting. And then at the council meeting, we planned to bring a kind of more fleshed-out and concrete stance to council for approval. But council got pushed until the end of August, just so it wasn't conflicting with people's exams. Yet, here we are today. Then on Thursday, the provincial government announced $6 million in funding for the proceeds of the Crime Frontline Policing Grant. And so I was watching Doug Ford speak when he made this announcement, and it kind of struck me as concerning. Just some of the language that he was using and the strategies that they were talking for addressing these issues didn't seem in line with what I had seen to be effective in the research and what we had heard from our students. So in consultation with RACE and the AVP Equity, the executive are looking to write a response letter to the Office of the Premier, essentially saying, "We're concerned about the direction that this is taking," with some of our recommendations for what we think could be done better to keep people safe. So today, we are asking for approval of the presented principles, concerns, and recommendations as the official position of WUSA. So if you haven't seen the agenda package, hopefully John can pop a link in the chat so people can take a look at the agenda, which has these principles, concerns, and recommendations, or PCRs, as I call them for short. And then we are seeking approval from councillors, because councillors did not feel comfortable delegating this decision to the executive committee or to the Committee of Society Presidents. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aisha, who's going to tell us a little bit about what the background is on this issue and where we're coming from.
Awesome. Hi, can everybody hear me? I'm gonna assume you can. So my name is Aisha. My pronouns are she/her. I'm one of the coordinators for the Racial Advocacy for Inclusion, Solidarity, and Equity, or RACE as a service, which is one of the three equity services, as I'm sure you're all aware. So I'm gonna be walking you through what defunding the police looks like, using these slides that Megan was kind enough to put together in very short notice. So if you have any questions, feel free to shoot them in the chat. I realize this is also a bit of a tricky topic to navigate, especially if you're not aware of what is being discussed. So when the offer to let me present, I asked if she would be okay taking any questions that people want to remain anonymous. So please, ask me whatever you want. We want this to be a learning space to better understand what exactly WUSA is advocating for, okay? Okay. So what is defunding the police? Well, it's exactly what it says. Entire intent to defund the police is to get rid of a system that, systemically and historically, has been rooted in marginalized bodies being oppressed and eliminated. So the recognition of defunding the police is the idea that policing exists to support a white upper-middle-class ideal. So when we defund it, we break apart a system that was never intended to include marginalized voices, particularly Black and Indigenous bodies, which is supported by the huge, huge overpolicing, over-incarceration of Black and marginalized Black and Indigenous bodies. Yep. So when we say defunding the police, it's also written in the fact that other than this system not actually being made to help these particular people, it's not really made to de-escalate situations. We live in a world where lots of things can happen because of systemic issues. We talk about crime like it's a vacuum, and we need to understand that when a crime is committed, whether that's something like murder, whether that's something like robbery, or whatever you see it as, it's a symptom of a systemic issue. So defunding the police is recognizing the systemic roots and basically saying that we want a holistic model of care, specifically community care aimed at dealing with the underlying determinants of the crime committed and preventing it in the future. And less about, once the crime is committed, people show up fully armed to cause more problems, if that makes sense. So in this community model of care, you're looking at a system that, instead of having police have all the power and control, it's more about social workers, healthcare workers, and other types of social services, working in an interdisciplinary fashion to assist whenever something does happen. The aim is that you're creating a society in which there is crime generally that's lower, because you're creating a more holistic model of care where people are supported and the underlying determinants that lead to crime are less frequent. Wow, I love all of the questions that are popping up. So I did wanna pop in here that if you've been keeping up with what's happening in the States, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez is a current member of parliament in the States who answered this question for a lot of people who were kind of new to this idea of defending the police. So she was asked at a public forum, what does that look like? And she gave a really great quote about the fact that it looks like investing in healthcare and education in white suburban communities to help people understand that a model of defending the police already does exist, and it's just a matter of decolonizing our own mindset to apply that to non-white bodies. Okay, so why do we need to defund the police? Because, like I said, policing exists to eliminate Black, Indigenous, people of color, and other marginalized bodies. We need to get rid of a system that's never meant to protect a large portion of the population it claims to support. In this slide, it talks a lot about what happened recently with George Floyd. It talks about the recent push for BLM. I just wanted to point to the fact that the call for defending the police is not the result of everything that's been happening since June. It's a much more historically-rooted issue that Black activists in particular have been fighting for for a very long time, because they are the people that are often overpoliced. So I just wanna say that it isn't because of just George Floyd. There are numerous murders. There are numerous people who never actually got to live their lives, numerous Black people, numerous Indigenous people, many whose names we don't know, because we don't actually record all of these statistics. So I wanna point out that there is a campaign called Say Her Name. There's a large movement to understand and continuously save the names of many, many victims that are sacrificed over policing. So this movement is not about what happened on June 1st. It is about a system of white supremacy that has existed for far too long and needs to be dismantled. So let's contextualize the issue a bit, because I realized that when we talk about defunding the police, there's a lot of push for what's happening in the States, which is how we tend to understand mainstream consciousness, really. It's what's happening in the US. But this is still a Canadian problem. Canada tries to see itself as very diverse and inclusive, and it definitely is, but that does not change the fact that we have a very robust policing system that is overfunded, which means that the statistics support the fact that Black, Indigenous folk in particular are overpoliced here. So if you look at this particular graph, it talks specifically about how, in terms of, if you just go by ethnicity, people that are killed in encounters, again, recognizing for percentage of population Indigenous, that's so much higher, right? Your percentage of population is so low, but the percentage of people that are victims of police encounters is that high. We should really be questioning our system. The same thing with Black people, the same thing with Asians, South Asian, a little less obviously with South Asian, and then obviously with white, there's a huge discrepancy. So that tells us again that there's a very big issue if you compare the number of people that are victims to the population and white people are not being sacrificed in the same way. Yeah. So what can be done? Well, defunding the police, like I said, and shifting to a model of care that's intended to help support collective community care, not overpolicing, and not putting people in prisons, which are ineffective, and research shows that. So one of the big points people bring up when you talk about defunding the police is this idea of police reform. Let's give them less money, let's give them more regulation, right? Let's find other ways without dismantling the system that they can do their job better. Two points to that. One, again, the system is not intended to protect Black, Indigenous, and people of color bodies. So there's nothing you can do to a broken system that is going to make it any less broken. Second thing, police reform does not work. There is a lot of research that shows that even cutting funding for police, even increasing things like body camps or increasing regulations around when and how they can pull their weapons or attack like anybody at a crime scene, does not change what police are doing, right? We saw that with George Floyd. We've seen that in Canada with people like Tamir Rice. We've seen that with any situation we've had, basically, where someone has called the cops on a BIPOC person, and it's become an issue of them doing far more. And because of the way policing is, the cops themselves never actually get indicted for their actions. It's also recognizing that not only are cops overpolicing BIPOC folk, they're not getting any consequences or suffering in any way. So the system can't be changed to make them do better. There's no incentive for that. So we're not talking about police reform. We're talking about defunding the police and abolition. So where does that leave us? Well, it leaves us at understanding that public safety and well-being of students should be a key priority. In particular, for universities, you can talk about how defunding police on a provincial level does bleed over into campus police, because campus policing is built on a very similar model to Ontario police systems. So when we talk about public safety and well-being, it's not just the fact that, like, at the University of Waterloo and the region of Waterloo, we defund, for example, the Waterloo Regional Police that has an impact on the students that live here, but also how does that impact how we police students, the presence of campus police, and other ways that policing affects our students every day, even within the microcosm that is university. The other part to that is, once you do defund the police, you have all these resources and all of these things that are still happening, right? So we offset that, like I said, with an investment in social services and a collective model of care that's intended to address underlying social determinants of why things like crime occur, therefore pretending crime in the long run. Yeah. So the problems that were identified, and as Megan was saying, the reason that WUSA feels that this is an important stance, is that the current strategy for funding is not having a good impact, which is the nice word for it. So it's harming marginalized communities. It is killing BIPOC folk. And so this has to be an issue we all need to care about, because otherwise... I honestly, I can't think of a reason not to care, is my thing. Because, like, we've seen, the research shows, the current system of policing is not helping anyone but white people. So we really need to shift to one that's actually inclusive of everyone. So current strategies are obviously deprioritizing the funding available, which goes against everything that Doug Ford just pledged to do, because he is also going through a reform model where he claims that if I give more money, that's somehow going to help them do reform. But like I said, reform is not effective. So Megan talked about recommendations. So recommendation one would be to allocate more funding to programs for non-crime events, again, understanding that underlying determinants like homelessness put you at a higher risk for things like crime. So if we're addressing the issue of homelessness, for example, you will see a reduction in crime, and that is something that has been effectively done in other regions in this world. So we have lots of models of successful ways that this can work that have been in other countries that we can follow, where we to go down this path. The other recommendation is, so not just for, like, non-crime-based, but generally we should be putting more in community-driven social services. So homelessness, like I said, but also addiction, sexual violence, mental health, there's lots, right? And again, they're all very interconnected. If you start to address the issue of homelessness, you will address many other issues that lead to not just crime, but other very unfortunate statistics. So that linkage between all these underlying determinants will mean that, once we start down this path of understanding why people end up in the situations that do require the policing system we have, nicely required with quotes, then we will be better able to change the entire situation to no longer need that system, and therefore, defending the police makes perfect sense. So there are some references here. If anyone would like to see some of the... Where we got this information? I also know that Nada put together a list of resources that she sent out to, I believe, all the councillors and anyone interested. And basically, that list is a really good start, because, again, I realize that this topic is a lot. And if you're starting on this path of understanding what defending the police means and what abolition means, you are opening a large kind of warms that is necessary. But there's a lot of information out there, and I would encourage you to use Google and our wonderful library and all the really amazing educational resources we have access to, and learn more about what it is before you make a decision on what you think should and should not be done. Okay, questions?
So we will start with Nick Dozen. Nick, you can speak.
Okay, so I have a question. I'm just concerned about something. So you mentioned that not only do you want to defund the police, right, so take away funding, you want to abolish the police?
Is that your complete question?
Well, no, that's not the complete question, sorry. I was just, I just wanna confirm that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would you replace them with exactly?
Community model of care. So policing is intended to be frontline. When somebody commits a crime, people show up and stop you using very big weapons. We would replace them with things like social workers. We would replace some with things like psychiatrists and councillors, people who can de-escalate, for example, but also people who can invest in long-term primary care, so that we do not get to a point where someone has, quote-unquote, "committed a crime" that requires someone to show up with a big gun.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds all right. But like, what if, for example, I'm in my house and someone is breaking in, or, I don't know, some other hypothetical situation where you need someone to help you in that moment? Who would I call and who would come?
So when I say replace police, I'm saying there's still gonna be a system in place you can call, not saying we're gonna get rid of it. There's a vacuum, and, you know, if you're getting robbed, you just stay there helplessly. I'm saying you're replacing the system. And to your point, A, so what ifs are a really interesting question, because you're opening up a lot of kind of worms, anything is really possible. But also, you need to consider, like, if you're getting robbed, why are you getting robbed? Who is robbing you? What are their circumstances that led them to do this? And B, to answer your point, you will still be able to call someone, but not someone trained in murder, someone trained in de-escalation, right? Like, they can be someone that is trained in how to handle that situation and talk that person down, and then get them the community supports necessary to not commit that crime again.
Can that person defend themselves? Like, I'm assuming, like, when they get here, because, like, I don't know if the guy robbing me, maybe he's crazy, I don't know, hypothetical, whatever. Like, what if the guy tries to... So the social worker gets here, they try to de-escalate the situation, the situation cannot be de-escalated. Is that person gonna be able to defend themselves and defend me? Am I gonna be safe?
I think, because I think what you're not realizing is that someone who is trying to de-escalate, they aren't helpless. Like, de-escalation is not just talking. De-escalation is a whole, like, behavioral set of tools you have to handle different things that occur. So yes, but also, like, two things. One, I wouldn't casually throw around the word crazy. It's a very negative term, a lot of negative connotations. I'm assuming you mean, was it someone who might be going through a mental health issue? In which case, there's lots of reasons for that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
Kind of trained, like, a therapist, actually trained in what's happening versus a cop that's just gonna see that and go like, "Oh, no, I'm in danger," and react, is still a much better scenario. And I will point out to you that in our current model of health, there are therapists, councillors, nurses, frontline medical workers that deal with people in those situations every day, and they never have to pull guns. So it is 100% possible. It's already being done. It's just a matter of decolonizing our own mindset, so we're not going like, "What if someone's attacking me?" We're going like, "Oh, how can we stop people from attacking you?", which is very easily possible. Does that make sense?
Sure. I'm, all right. I don't know, to me, like, kinda just sounds like better police, you know? Kinda sounds like police who are taught more, you know, stuff. I don't know, either way.
Nick, I'm gonna stop you right there, and we're gonna move on to...
Yeah, sorry about that.
Catherine, go ahead.
I'm not sure. I see a two in the chat from Stephanie.
I'm not sure who Stephanie was directly responding to, or Stephanie, were you trying to be added to the speaking order? You would like to directly respond to Nick? Stephanie? Go ahead.
Yeah, so... I guess, like, something I would like to, like, add to, kind of, like... Okay, so within the context of this council meeting, we're essentially approving or voting to approve the motion that Megan put out. So not necessarily... Yeah, I'm forgetting the word. Like, the... Like, I would base this more on whether or not you agree with the position that Megan is proposing. I think there's various degrees to what, the extent to which people believe we should defund or dismantle the police. And, you know, that's gonna get us down, like, this whole rabbit hole of conversation, as we just saw within the last, like, three or four minutes. But like, for the sake of, I guess, like, this first step that we're making is that we're making more of, I guess, like, a moderate position. So I think, like, in asking ourselves, like, how we're gonna proceed in this, we need to base it off this, not on a slippery slope of where this goes or where it's gonna go later, because we can ask those questions later. But in terms of, like, do you agree with the statements in which Megan put forth, is, I think, what we really need to be focusing on right now.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll move on to Catherine, gone.
Hi, thank you. I have a question, and this is to RACE. Why does RACE think that WUSA, which is supposed to be a mainly student-oriented organization, why do we think that WUSA is in a good position to advocate on this particular issue?
So, well, as RACE... Sorry, just give me a second to collect my thoughts. So I think it's less about WUSA, like I said, I think... Well, I think defunding the police is something everyone should care about, because I think anyone in any position has some form of power that you can use to advocate for this. WUSA in particular, like I said, policing affects university students, right? We have seen it happen at university campuses, whether that's campus police, whether that's regional police, where they've taken university students, Black and Indigenous university students, and arrested them. They've had the cops called on them, they've been carted, right? University students' lives are dictated by police systems. So I think your student union 100% should take a position, and that position should be to get rid of a system that's actively oppressing the Black and Indigenous students who are paying thousands upon thousands of dollars to be here on a safe campus. So to me, it's a very odd question, because I'm like, if I was paying this much money, which I am, but, you know, I'm a brown woman, so I have a much different relationship to policing. If I, you know, was Black or Indigenous, and I'm paying all this money on this campus, my student union that I'm also paying for and advocating for can't advocate for me to feel safe and included, I would be very confused as to why I'm paying this money and why I'm here. Does that make sense?
Cannon has a point of personal privilege.
I'm sorry, I kind of lost. I couldn't hear what she was saying in the end about Black and Indigenous, could she repeat that?
I was just saying that, for example, Black and Indigenous folk, like the rest of us, are paying thousands of dollars to be on this campus, and policing on this campus and in this region affects their day-to-day lives. So I would consider it really, really awful if they don't feel safe and included, which they do not, by virtue of the fact that policing puts their lives in danger while being on this campus.
I would also add to that, that the idea of advocating on issues which are not, like, absolutely directly related to post-secondary education is not a new thing for WUSA and for working with our partner organizations. So when you think about issues like mental health, or issues affecting LGBTQ+ students, or sexual violence prevention and response, these are things that are like OSAP or like online courses that are, like, directly tied to the post-secondary education industry, but it is still an issue of access to post-secondary education. It's still an issue, like Aisha said, about safety for our Black and Indigenous students. So it's something that, as a topic that is seriously affecting our students, is a place that we can speak out on.
Thank you all. We'll move on to Stephanie.
Sorry, you can skip me.
We'll move on to John Hunt.
All right, I'll just restate my first question. As is being stated by the executives, it is ineffective to compare the United States and Canada. Why are we then making reference to the United States to justify the abolishment of the police?
Wait, sorry, your question is to RACE or to the execs?
Whoever is presenting this.
I can answer that. So, well, one thing, you know, yes, we're not going Canada, but Canada, as I'm sure you're aware, is very, very informed by what happened in the States. It's the nature of a globalized world. US politics impacts us, so does US social situations, including policing. The reality is that there's just more research in the States, because it's much bigger, a lot more tends to happen, so that's the research we use. There is a lot of Canadian research. I'll ask you to refer to the resources in the dissent. There's a lot of information about policing, overpolicing, and the negative impact it has in Canadian communities. When I reference the States, it's because I realize that for a lot of people, that's the thing that they're exposed to from mainstream media, so I want to personalize it to them in a way that's easily accessible. That's not to say it's not a problem here and that you can't find Canadian sources. I was just picking the most easy one that people are exposed to, to help them understand. Does that make sense?
I understand, thank you. My second question, RACE exists to advocate for exactly these kind of issues, which will overly politicize our association. Why is RACE unable to advocate for this on its own, and hence, the need for WUSA to take a stance as a whole?
I'll answer that. John, WUSA... RACE is a part of WUSA. All of our services, all of our clubs, all of our student leaders are a part of WUSA. Just because RACE is taking a stance, it doesn't mean that stance doesn't apply to WUSA or isn't associated with WUSA. We are one organization, and right now, the executive are partnering with RACE and partnering with our AVP Equity because of the expertise that they bring on this topic. Speaking of expertise, most of the expertise when it comes to government relations lives in my role as the Vice President Education. Because this is a pretty big topic, and we're looking at collaborating with other student associations, it is living as a collaboration between myself and those other parties.
John, I'll allow you to directly respond, and then we'll move on to Stephanie.
Megan, unfortunately, I have to disagree with you there, that the services do exist to have a separate entity from the WUSA central, so that they can take on often seen as controversial stances without affecting the organization as a whole, because the organization as a whole represents everybody, while the services can actually go and seek specific goals.
Okay, so I see a few direct responses here. RACE, I'll allow you to directly respond, then we'll move to Victoria. Please try to keep your responses under 30 seconds.
Sure. I was just gonna say that to Megan's point, yes, and to your point as well, yes, there are things we can advocate for separately. With something like policing that I described, it's such a large system that having your only racialized service consisted of only racialized folk, advocating is just ineffective. It would not do anything, because RACE does not have that type of power. So it makes a lot more sense if you're trying to make systemic change to actually have those...
to actually have the student union and then going beyond that, the actual Ontario government, right? Because the same question can be asked for, well, okay, well, if we think that there shouldn't be policing, why don't we just do that on our own as WUSA? Why do we have to go to Tel Aviv for it on provincial level to do it? Because WUSA does not have that power, universities don't have that power, we need to have the support from the larger systems that actually control them. Right? So I understand your point, that does apply to other issues. This issue was too large and complex to be taken on by racialized folks.
Uh, Victoria, would you like to speak?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Abby. Uh, so I just want to, I think, do a brief introduction of like myself and just like directly respond to both the comments that I'm seeing in conversation and from what I have a feeling that um, dissent is largely like grounded on or grounded within. Um, so I think first, I think it's, I think it's very unreasonable to assume that just because, you know, this is a race-related issue, then this issue should be singularly delegated to Raise as like, what is the point of having black students pay student union fees? Like, why am I paying, um, why am I paying for WUSA if like the only thing that, you know, that they only, um, take non-political stances on things? Um, secondly, like as the AVP Equity and someone that was hired to be in this position, I very much think that it is within WUSA's rights and actually responsibilities to take a step out and to advocate for black students on their behalf. Not sure how many people on this call are black or indigenous. Um, but uh, speaking as a black student, like I've been policed on campus for no reason. Like, I've had police being threatened to get called on me for no reason. If you don't really understand like what the experience is like, then I don't think that you should be dictating whether or not like this is a position that should be spoken out, like upon, like for, like, there are so many people, like politicians and like other elected officials that, you know, that are actively like speaking out, um, speaking out on these things, because this is just about like humanity. Like unless your community is being, um, directly targeted in this way, then I can't see that you would even have like a fully nuanced position as to like whether or not, um, whether or not you should be, be speaking out on this.
Uh, thank you, Victoria. I'm going to move back to the speaking order. Um. Stephanie, did, did you have an opportunity to speak?
Madam Speaker, there's a point of privilege.
Oh, sorry, I did not see that. Uh, thank you. Um, go ahead, John.
Yes, um, I actually think that as a counselor, I do have a right to vote on council, and that counselors have more of a right to vote on council than non-voting members of council, and I would like that noted for the record. That we are a representative body, and it is our jobs to represent our constituents. Despite not actually physically being our constituents.
Uh, thank you, John. I'm going to move back to the speaking order. Um, Stephanie, would you like to speak?
Um, firstly, can I, uh, address a question towards Meghan, or should this only be in regards to the, uh, the presentation?
Um, the questions right now are in regards to the presentation that you just heard. Um, if you, if your question is for the main motion, we, you can, you could wait until, uh, you have an opportunity to speak.
Um, I'm just gonna go ahead and ask it, because it's kind of like in the intermittent section. Um, so. So if a council approves the motion that's being asked, um, I guess in what ways will, um, the VP Education and the VP Education's portfolio be advocating on the particular recommendations, like, um, like who might you be talking to? Um, will this involve kind of like research, um, being done on like WUSA's end, like, um, in, in adopting this, like what kind of tangible actions, um, can we expect to kind of arise from this?
Yep, I can respond to that, um, and thank you for the question. So what we're looking to do is to firstly write a letter to the Office of the Premier expressing our concerns. We are also looking to share that letter with organizations in the community and other student associations in our network across Ontario to get their support for the letter. Um, it's relatively easy for us to get a meeting with our local MPP, Catherine Fife, and so we'd like to open a discussion with her about where this advocacy can go with, with the ultimate goal of getting this information in front of the eyes of the Office of the Premier to express our discontent. And I mean, I, I understand not very well, but somewhat how government works, and I, I understand that it's honestly relatively unlikely that this particular six million dollars is gonna get taken away from this project and allocated to what we're asking for. But by, uh, starting this advocacy work, we hope to make a change for funding allocation in the future.
Thank you, Stephanie and Meghan. I'm going to move on to Jason Small.
My, my, mine was a statement for the general speaking order.
Uh, would you like me to add you to the speaking order then, Jason?
Yes, please.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I'll move to Alexander Air.
Sure, I have two questions. Uh, the first question revolves around the actual content of that six million dollar grant. Um, if you, if you look into where that six million dollars is going, it's going to fighting gun crime, uh, to, uh, helping the survivors of sexual assault and to fighting human trafficking. What part of this six million dollar grant do you feel is misused? Uh, because I'm concerned if this is taken away, uh, that's gonna result in less women and girls being rescued from, uh, human trafficking. Uh, because of course, this should be a concern to our province. Uh, my second question revolves around.
Sorry, Alex, can I respond to your first question before you jump into the second one? I, I, I don't wanna speak for Aisha here, but I believe the concern is that in many cases, the police are not the best people to be doing this work. To be a social worker takes like six or eight years of education, so they have the specialized knowledge that can most effectively help survivors of sexual violence, uh, heal and, and come to terms with what has happened. So the problem is absolutely not with the specific initiatives that are mentioned, like sexual violence, like human trafficking. Uh, and it's with the concern that those who are being given money to do this work are not, not those who are most effectively trained to do it.
Okay, thank you, Meghan. Uh, the second question revolves around, uh, why WUSA is being chosen as the best organization to push this? Um, because our charter clearly states that, uh, we're promoting advocacy in the common interest of students, uh, which would imply that we would stay away from extremely controversial positions. Our Procedure 9F specifically limits advocacy to those relating to post-secondary education or university policies. And, uh, we, many of us who have been at WUSA for many years have known a time where WUSA, or FEDS as it was known, was the place where lots of non-university-related political debates happened. Just think of the Israeli-Palestine debate, which took away a lot of time and effort that could have been spent on getting advocacy done for students, but instead of working together, we were fighting each other. Um, so my question is, why was WUSA chosen for this rather than Raise, rather than our, uh, the people who care about this getting involved in, uh, say, a political party that's, uh, pushing for this, or an NGO, or one of our many WUSA clubs, which we encourage students to go into so they could fight for issues they care about. Because I know I have my political opinions, everyone else has their political opinions, but WUSA isn't the place uh, to, uh, push all of our political opinions. It's to work on our common interests, not every single political view that we hold.
Alex, I think that, um, it's a bit of a, a misnomer to title this as a political opinion. I think certainly that this idea is more associated with certain political spheres than others. But at the heart of it, this is an issue about safety, and this is an issue about access to education. And I think that WUSA would be neglecting a serious part of the student experience if we are not taking on advocacy to ensure equitable access to education and to ensure safety for every single student on our campus. I, I understand where people get tied up in the language of the common interest of all students, because there are less black students on our campus than students of other backgrounds, and that is in part because of systemic inequities. So as people who have the ability to do the research, have the expertise in government relations, I feel that it is WUSA's place to advocate for safety, to advocate for equity, and to, to take this opportunity to advocate for the equitable treatment of black and indigenous students. Um, I think it's really important that everyone here today is mindful of their privilege and the place that they are coming from when they are approaching these conversations. As a white woman, I don't know what it's like to feel unsafe because of the institution of policing. So I'm trying to do my research and talk to our black students and understand why they are feeling unsafe and what I can do to address that as part of my position at WUSA.
Meghan, I have a point of order in the chat from, uh, Edward Yang.
Hi, um, for the sake of cohesive and coherent discussion, can I request the speaker limit the chat to you simply for speaking order requests and points of order, and that no side discussions happen in the chat of any nature?
Uh, thank you, Edward. We're going to be getting to that when I go over, um, debate rules uh, for the rest of the discussion on the main motion, but uh, yes, for now, just so that I can monitor discussion, can we limit the chat to one, ones, which is, um, adding yourself to the speaking order, two, direct response, or, uh, three would be myself, um, notifying speakers that uh, they have one minute or thirty seconds remaining to speak, uh, during their turn.
Abby, I think with that, we've exhausted most of the questions, so perhaps we can proceed with the guidelines and then, and then move on to the debate of the main motion?
I would like to first respond to Alex, if that's okay, Abby.
Sure, Nada, go ahead. You are the seconder.
Okay, thank you. So, um, to Alex's point, um. I, I, I guess, yeah, going back to also a point that Meghan raised, um, a lot of people on this call have the privilege of not um, having gone through the experiences of being, um, carded even on campus. And if we're talking about WUSA's stance on this, um, Alex, our black student clubs on campus had police presence for no reason. So if we're talking about why WUSA is advocating on this, the best answer that I can give you right now is because black students is, are a part of WUSA as well. So I'm, I'm not sure where your point is coming from, but I just wanted to, to make sure that you understand that.
Thank you, Nada. As I've exhausted the speaking order for the Q and A period, um, following this presentation, I'd like to move on to a discussion on the main motion. Um, Meghan, did you have additional information you would like to add before I begin to open the speaking list, um, and have first speakers have their time to speak?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Uh, John, if you would, can you put the speaking order, can you share the speaking order on the screen for everyone to see? Uh, before we, oh, sorry, John?
I said I will try.
Thank you. Um, before we begin, I would just like to go over a few uh, reminders for counselors and some members who are joining us. Um, a couple of the things that I'm gonna go over today is, uh, each counselor or attendee is entitled to four turns of debate on each motion. Uh, the first time that you will be speaking, you will begin four minutes. And then your second to fourth, so your remaining three times, uh, will be no more than two minutes. Uh, and I will be timing and we'll be cutting everyone off, just in the interest, uh, we have an hour left until adjournment. Um, all debate will be timed. I will be giving you a one-minute and thirty-second warning in the chat. Um, so again, please refrain from discussion in the chat. The chat must be used for adding yourself to the speaking order, um, giving me notice that you would like to uh, directly respond, or me, uh, giving information about the remaining time left, uh, for the speakers. Um, please wait for me to acknowledge you before speaking. Um, I'll be going through the speaking order, but I just wanna make sure I have enough time to reset the timer before we move forward. Uh, to add yourself to the speaking order, please add a one in the chat, and if you could, uh, before you start talking, please, uh, state your full name, so your first and last name, just for the minutes. Uh, if you, if you wish to directly respond to a statement, please put a two in the chat and include the name of the individual you are responding to. For, so for example, you could put two and then Meghan Towne, if you would like to respond to a comment that Meghan has said. Uh, if you are calling in and you would like to be added to the speakers list or directly respond, um, if you have Teams available on your cell phone, um, please send, uh, speaker@usa.ca a message or email speaker@usa.ca to be added to the speaking list. Um, all debate must come through the speaker. Uh, if you are directly responding to a statement you have heard, please address the speaker by saying, "Madam Speaker," with respect to the person that you are responding to, and then "statement," and then you can move on with the rest of your discussion from there. Um, a reminder that we are here to represent the best interests of all students and the students that we serve, and please approach a genuine debate and consider your duty as representatives. I will also note that if you are found to be speaking out of turn or speaking over any individual, your mic will be muted by the speaker and deputy speaker. We will be following the speaking order to allow everyone an equal opportunity to speak. Um. That being said, I'm going to open up the speaking order now to speak on the main motion. Um, so far I have Cannon, Matthew, Catherine, Jason, and Alexander Air. If you would like to be added to the speaking order, please, uh, include a one in the chat. Um. Matt, you have a point of information?
Yeah, I was just wondering, uh, you mentioned four speaking turns. Are, uh, are, uh, direct responses counted as, uh, speaking turns? Because I figured that ambiguity could probably come back to bite people if they didn't know this from the start.
Uh, thank you, Matt. So yes, um, your second to fourth, um, so your last, your remaining three speaking terms will be direct responses. Uh, your first speaking turn will be the four minutes, and your direct responses will be each two minutes. Um. Raise, you have a point of privilege?
Yes, sorry, I just wanted to make a point. So earlier about the chat, I realized that you changed the rules so that it's only about speaking order. I just wanted to make a point that I think that's actually not good in tone policing, because I want you to, again, and somebody's pointed this out already, most of the people in council don't have the lived experience or the background to really understand this topic, and many, many people are attending, taking the time out of their day to be here, who are actually willing to respond to some of these questions and, you know, actually give people their lived experience. Can't do that, because now only the council can speak, and we can't even have that debate in the chat. I just think it's very, I think it's wrong that now the chat is only ones and twos in terms of who can talk. Because I do think that's inaccessible for many people, and it is disrespectful that the only reason that point was brought up was when two black women in that chat made a very relevant point about what we were debating. Because fundamentally, yes, what we are debating is whether black students and indigenous students and their existence is valid enough to justify abolishing the police that exists to oppress them.
Abby, may I directly respond to that comment?
Uh, go ahead, Meghan.
Yeah, um, I, I'd just like to mention that, uh, these were the rules that we had developed ahead of time. The reason why we want to reserve the chat for only ones and twos is because the chat is not entered into the records. So we'd like to ensure that everyone's valuable comments, like you said, people are taking time out of their day to be here, are recorded in the minutes, and therefore they must be said aloud. Um, if there is a technical or accessibility issue, that means that you are not able to speak out loud, please email speaker@usa.ca. We'll absolutely be sure to resolve that. I'd also like to, to note that at-large members, so anyone in attendance here today, is able to be added to the speaking order. They just need to be acknowledged by Abby.
Uh, thank you, Meghan. Uh, again, I'll open up the, um, chat if you would like to be added to the speaking order. Um. John, you wanted to respond to Megan's point? Oh, go ahead, John.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I believe it was mentioned that there was debate on whether or not black students and their existence mattered enough. That was not, in fact, what the debate was about. The debate was about whether or not they existed at all, which is why I requested that the chat was kept to reasonable debate because I I I don't believe that anybody believes we're in a matrix simulation where certain people don't actually exist. That is my point to you, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
John, I will say that during a regular scheduled council meeting, I would also be asking people in the chat to refrain from, normally there are memes or jokes or other topics of conversation in the chat. It actually makes it very difficult for myself and the deputy speaker to manage the speaking order and we end up losing people who would like to speak. So this is not me silencing the chat because I would love to continue the debate and have more discussion, which is why I'm opening up the speaking order to anyone and everyone will have an opportunity to directly respond once we have exhausted the main speaking order. It just helps myself and John ensure that we have everyone on the speaking list and that I can adequately provide people with enough notice of the closure of their speaking time as possible. So again, I ask councillors and at-large members to put a one in the chat if you would like to be added to the speaking order so that I can start, myself and the deputy speaker can start collecting that speaking order. The way that this is going to work is everybody who is on the main motion speaking order at first will have an opportunity to speak for four minutes. And then once that everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to do so, I will move on to direct responses, which John and myself will also be keeping track of in the document that everyone had the link to. And I may ask that the deputy speaker include the link again in the meeting chat just so that everybody has access to the speak, the speaking order so that we can keep everything on track. Thank you again, John, for putting that in. I will start the speaking order with councillor Sharma. You have four minutes to speak, starting now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I say say my written statement, I would like to directly respond to Vice President Towne saying we should recognize our privilege. I totally agree. A lot of us have not faced the issues, people of color face, but we are here not as people but as representative of our student constituency. So I think it's unfair to call it our privilege because we're not winning on our personal opinions but from the feedback we have gotten from our students, which is our job to do. I will start with my written speech, Madam Speaker. Some of this has already been talked about by other people, but bear with me. So I've put a lot of thought into this issue since it was brought up on the Thursday, trying to figure out what I think the right response is for my constituents. We, the student councillors and executives, weren't elected on our political beliefs. So I've tried my best to keep my personal thoughts aside while writing the statement despite personally agreeing that significant political and social changes are needed in policing and governing, government generally. I would first like to say it is possible to spend more on social services without removing the ability of the police to prevent and respond to crime. As a person of color myself, I understand the struggles and injustices people of color, especially black students, face throughout, at the hands of police. I think instead of cutting police funding, we should spend more on social services and reallocate the police funding internally to support specialized training for police officers to try and get rid of these internal biases. Secondly, I don't think it's responsible for WUSA to engage in such non-academic political advocacy. As stated in our charter, the objective of the Federation is, and I quote, "to promote the welfare and the interests of students of the University of Waterloo in all matters while respecting their common interests," end quote. Based on all the consultations I've been able to do with at-large members in my constituency, which is the faculty of math for those tuning into this meeting today, it seems to be fairly consistent belief that this topic is not in common interest of student body, nor is it something that the majority of my constituency believes the student government should be engaging in, even if many of them personally agree and have a desire to see such changes in their own personal capacity. Taking a stance on such controversial issue not directly related to post-secondary education or this university's environment specifically, in my opinion, is in conflict with the objectives of the corporation and with Council Procedure 9F, which clearly states, and I quote, "A policy is a formal stance made by council that sets out the beliefs, governing principles, or reasons of the corporation, including with regards to philosophical matters or government relating to or associated post-secondary education or university policies," end quote. If the executives' proposed advocacy stance is directly related to examining and re-envisioning our university campus police as a security incentive response to our support system, then I think it would be more adequate and relevant for this purpose of the student government defined by law and, more importantly, of the interest to all our students. Unfortunately, the executives have not sought to solve a problem affecting UW students in their capacity as students of UW, but rather in their capacity as residents of Waterloo, Ontario, and Canada, which is a civic duty for all of us to act upon for sure, but not a corporate objective of the student organization. We should look at the relevance to our student body and how to address issues faced on our campus and co-ops. And in in while saying this, I'm not saying this is not relevant, but from my constituency, they would like to see more emphasis on things that affect their day-to-day life, such as campus and co-ops. Another point I would like to bring forth is it's never good to rush into anything, especially on something of such large magnitude, which could affect the organization's reputation and relations with the government. Our government, which I might add, is in power for a couple more years and has already highlighted serious facilities for student groups that insert themselves into politics unrelated to education and student affairs. We don't need to be even under more scrutiny while still reeling from the Student Choice Initiative. If we rush into this and the data doesn't overwhelmingly support what we do, the students that vehemently disagree will have a very easy time painting us as hasty and non-representative of the comments or average student beliefs of what which this organization should be. It will affect our image and opt-out rates, which have already been going up term over term because our student population is more physically conservative than many other institutes. From what I've seen and heard from people who have been here before me, feds used to be a battleground between groups wishing to take stances on matter completely unrelated to post-secondary education, for example, international relations and diplomacy issues. This was a distraction from the normal operations of the organization, diverted resources from engaging and serving our students on a litany of issues that were far closer to home for them and made less focus on advocacy to actually help students. Feds ran multiple referenda on contentious issues in the past and those failed. This organization has done a lot of work over the past few years to ensure that the student government never returns to those tenuous times.
Councillor Sharma, for four minutes is up. Please wrap up your last sentence and we'll be moving on.
Okay, I will just wrap this thing. I would like this August body to not take a stance on this issue and rather indirectly support our our services by financial means if they require other resources to advocate for this instead of directly being one of the organizations who are doing this and be under more scrutiny by the government. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We'll move on to Matthew, sorry, I'm gonna mess up your last name, Suarez.
Suarez, that's all right. Thank you.
Ah, close. One moment. Your speaking time begins now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, councillors and students. I want to start by saying that redirecting funds from law enforcement to social programs can make sense. I think it certainly does in the U.S. and it may here, although I don't have the evidence to assert that yet. I feel that we should not be involving ourselves in politics that are not inherently student-oriented without an explicit mandate from our members. This kind of action will motivate WUSA membership to defund us on the grounds we push our own political agendas and do not leave time for them to provide input or hold us to account. This sets a dangerous precedent that we can respond unilaterally to non-student issues with our own beliefs, beliefs that were not in any way reflected in the platforms we ran on. This is not what we're here for. If our members want action, let them tell us at large or help them approach an external devoted organization that will do a much better job advocating for it than we ever could. Now, I want to talk a bit about the government announcement that initially prompted this debate. Councillor Dong and I did some research and we believe the executive team's proposed statement suggests a severe disconnect between the reality of this funding project and our understanding of it. The Proceeds of Crime Frontline Policing Grant is a $6 million grant of money seized from criminals by the courts and available by application to police services. To apply, police services must partner with at least two community organizations to deliver programs combating, quote, "gun and gang violence, human trafficking, and sexual violence and harassment." Now, the provincial government is, at times, no stranger to stretching the truth. So I want to summarize some of the funding programs for you. Berry Police are working with third-party sexual violence agency partners in the community to build an anonymous sexual abuse reporting app, as well as integrate medical examinations and victim counseling services into the Sexual Violence Investigations Unit. North Bay has three programs. One, response to people experiencing mental health crises with teams from the local hospital to provide medical support and assessment on the scene without requiring officers' supervision. The Gateway Hub project works to identify and support at-risk families. North Bay also has a project to form positive relationships between police and the community by providing health and safety advice to students in schools. South Simcoe Police will provide training and education to officers to better recognize the signs of gang activity and risk factors in youth. The Indigenous Treaty III Police Service is implementing a trauma-informed approach to combating sexual violence, harassment, harassment, and human trafficking on their reserve. The West Nipissing Police Service is creating a new community safety officer that addresses the opioid crisis while prioritizing mental health and community well-being. After recommendations from an inquest into the accidents and deaths of seven First Nations youth by drowning, the Thunder Bay is positioning officers to locate, assist, and protect individuals near dangerous waterways. Waterloo and Guelph Police are teaming up with victim services in Waterloo region and Wellington to build a joint human trafficking unit, which will include a dedicated victim councillor, the dedicated invectors, and victim support services to provide the best possible experience to victims. The Shunyaa Police Service will support frontline liaison officers to address local needs, particularly municipalities, quote, "community safety and well-being plan and ensure initiatives are effective in addressing social development, prevention, risk intervention, and incident response." Tema Skimming Shores Police Service is collaborating with the local Victim Services and Youth Justice Committee to build a program to combat street crime and drug enforcement. These are all the programs on this grant of funding that I could find reported online. There are others listed on the province's website, all in the same spirit. I was able to verify if they're all from the current or past year, and I'll post that link in the chat so you can check them all out. As these programs are listed, only one is enforcement ownership and it's in partnership with justice organizations in a town with less than 10,000 people that might lack policing resources. I'm not sure. I'm not trying to get you to support this program. However, I'm trying to demonstrate this grant will simply not do what it, it will simply not, will simply not do what it is implied to do through this proposed statement and WUSA's posts on social media. This shows this is not a time-sensitive issue that we need to comment on right now and that we have to get a proper and informed mandate from members if we want one at all. We are a student organization and our members have expressed time and time again that they prefer to advocate only for Waterloo undergraduate student issues. I'm glad that you, Wong, and Ray, the dedicated services that can focus differently. Representing all of WUSA, we should not be doing anything without an explicit mandate. We, as student reps, do not have a mandate to act on this. Our members never got to make an informed choice on our political stances. We, as a student association, have internally mischaracterized this particular action of the government as something that it's not. If we rashly continue on this course of actions, we will look uninformed and polarized to our membership of an effect on our reputation and opt-out rates, damaging our ability to advocate on issues in the future when students see.
Thank you, councillor Schwartz. We're gonna have to move on in the speaking order. Your four minutes is up.
All right, go right ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councillor Dong, I will start your speaking time now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If we rashly continue with this course of action, we will look uninformed and polarized to our membership and it will have an effect on our reputation and opt-out rates, damaging our ability to advocate on issues in the future when students need WUSA and specifically WUSA. There's nothing about WUSA here that makes us uniquely able to affect change on this issue and making our stand here is choosing a particularly unstable hill to die on. Please vote not to make a statement on this issue and let our members tell us what they want and not the other way around. I'd like to reiterate previous point that I am not getting you to support this program. I'm trying to demonstrate that this grant is simply not what it has implied to be through this proposed statement and WUSA's posts on social media. This shows that this is not a time-sensitive issue that we need to comment on right now and that we have time to get a proper and informed mandate from our members if they wish to call for one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dong. I'll move on to Jason Small.
Do I begin? Okay. Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. For the convenience of the secretary, I will be emailing a copy of the statement. Good afternoon, councillors. I convey this statement to you today as a WUSA veteran who has served as a councillor for three years and as deputy speaker of council for 18 months. While I considered myself to a fully retired from student politics prior to this past week, I decide that was essential I provide my expert opinion with regards to the matter at hand. It should be noted that I personally agree with the point of view expressed in the proposed stance, as I'm sure many UW students do. However, I must strongly advise against adoption of this motion as it sets a dangerous precedent in terms of the scope of issues that should be advocated for by the organization. There's been the longstanding largely unwritten practice for WUSA to only take on political advocacy with regards to issues that specifically apply to either the UW student body or to post-secondary students as a whole. While the VP Education has listed examples of issues not solely about students that WUSA has taken stances on, all of those stances have been framed solely on the ways on which general issues apply to students in particular. This restraint from broader political advocacy exists in part out of recognition the general views of UW students span across the political spectrum. As the official representative organization of UW undergraduate students, we should not aim to alienate students with different views on a very controversial issue when it has no direct tie to their role as students. Additionally, this approach is strategic in allowing the best chance to advance dialogue on issues specifically applying to students. As a counter example, many other student associations which have adopted a wide range of stances on general leveling issues such as the Canadian Federation of Students have effectively become partisan in all but any, to the extent that it becomes impossible for them to advocate on any issue while a government of the opposing party is in power by any means other than mass protest. In contrast, while students may fare somewhat better under the governments of certain parties, WUSA has maintained fruitful relationships with cabinet ministers, MPs, and MPPs from all major parties. As appropriate and timely as the currently proposed stance is, it represents a major divergence from the established advocacy practices of WUSA which risks hampering the organization's credibility in its student lobbying activities. If specific matters of concern can be identified either with regards to the activities or funding of the UW police or with regards to police activities that specifically target students, I would encourage that stances be made to directly and solely address those issues. Otherwise, I urge councillors to vote against WUSA adopting a stance on the issue regardless of your or your constituents' personal opinions on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I'll move on to councillor Hunt. Your speaking time begins now.
Thank you. My colleagues have expressed general views which I acknowledge and agree with. I will now present the results of my consultations with constituents. The views stated are not my own, but those of my constituents. I received the following statements in favor. I support the reallocation of resources to mental health and other initiatives. I don't think tactics like the escalation programs or bias training are effective, but I would love to see the funding moved to other necessary mental health resources on our campus, particularly since our campus is already known for not supporting these, those with mental health issues. Personally, based on what I've, next point. Personally, based on what I've researched, defunding is a solution to go with. While I think WUSA should emphasize student advocacy, I, one, think police services do affect everyone, including students. And, two, I think that WUSA should still be advocating for societal issues based on the opinions of their student body. I think that I can ask is that before going into the meeting, the independent research is also done by you and other representatives so that people are well informed. I received the following statements against. The government does not care what an undergrad student association thinks about police. Quote, "We should be as non-partisan as possible and only put resources in advocating for directly student-related things." This issue has, quote, "literally nothing to do with the school." WUSA is using its platform to, quote, "virtual signal for causes you personally believe in that have absolutely nothing to do with the student body you're supposed to represent." And, quote, "using your positions in WUSA to do so is unprofessional and further advances the view that WUSA is a useless joke." General dissent was expressed towards WUSA. It was stated that WUSA should focus on student-specific advocacy and that tangential advocacy efforts like this contribute to their opting out of our fees. A student expressed that, "Well, this is something that should be discussed. It is not WUSA's place to discuss it. Our job is to speak for and act for the students." They want, they went on to list some of their ideas for suitable advocacy objectives. Ways to help international students enter the country if they want to per class, proper quarantine, spaces and rides into campus, advocate for students off-campus, bus pass issues, healthier food options on campus, more mental health resources, help with online courses, getting the gym or study spaces reopened. Other miscellaneous concerns included fees, imprint, bus pass, parking, online learning, a global pandemic. Quote, "This line of advocacy just made me opt out of the WUSA advocacy fee." Quote, "This is irrelevant and shouldn't be happening. Waste of time and money. This is why no one takes WUSA seriously. There is this taste for lack of originality and a desire for us to seek genuine change through not yet explored avenues." A student expressed the following. Defunding the police is still a fringe political position which has not been fully fleshed out and has few impacts explored. Quote, "Few people have the balls to be publicly, non-anoniously against this motion. It's socially unacceptable to not want to defend the police. I would never share my opinion about this in a public place except with close, close friends because I'm not trying to get canceled." Quote, "The campus police don't even have weapons. Something tells me there hasn't been a lot of use caused by them." Quote, "There are tons of other things that WUSA should be focusing on right now and personally, this falls so far on the list, it's frustrating to see all the effort that has already gone into this." And, quote, "I am disappointed in you, WUSA. Do better. Serve." Do better, serve your whole student body better. Your actions need to directly help students fight for what we need now in a pandemic and a movement in our educational careers. Don't jump on the bailiwick just because people ask you to take a stance." The previous statement came from a past executive. Quote, "I really do agree with the statement given, but I understand that others about this may not relate to student affairs. If WUSA wants to learn from this moment of police reform and the public conscience, they should focus on how the Waterloo police interact with students. Personally, I've only experienced moments where police are very patient with junk students, lol, but that doesn't that isn't the complete perspective of UW students. Any area of police interaction with the student body that could be improved should be considered to be improved." That summarizes the statements received for the feedback expressed above. I support Rais advocating for this issue in a limited stance with the university without WUSA taking a stance on a whole or Ontario or the entire country of Canada. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor Hunt. I'll now move on to Guy Brodsky. Your four minutes begins now.
Hi, just got a new mic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, great. So I just have a couple of quick points. I think that it's important to recognize that just because it's not necessarily an issue that affects the whole student body doesn't mean that it doesn't affect students that go to UWaterloo, that pay tuition, that volunteer in services and help out the other student body or the rest of the student body. And I think that it's also important to recognize that just because it's not specifically like a Ministry of Education thing within the Ontario context doesn't mean that it doesn't affect education and other more relevant issues to students. Currently, our VP Ed and the Ontario Undergraduate Student Association is working on a few different policy papers, one of which is access or accessibility to education. And it's really important to recognize that that doesn't actually only occur once people are in school. A lot of different factors influence people being able to actually access education, some of which are people literally being suspended at school for no real good reason and eventually ending up in prison down the line. That is the school-to-prison pipeline, and it's a very well-researched issue. Another issue is that, you know, as we all know, the provincial government is quite questionable at times, and current big, big, big cuts to education, or at least to secondary public education, are going to be harming students for a long time, not just for this year. And I think that it's important to recognize that those cuts are not an isolated thing, and they exist within the broader spectrum of what the provincial government deems worthy of funding. I don't think the programs that this new $6 million grant are bad at all, and I don't think that I luckily, I don't think that they actually will influence some of the worst parts of policing, such as like community policing and school resource officers and other more just predatory, really bad things. But I think that putting more money into the police is not necessarily a good call right now. One big thing with money and police is that they pretty much get increases in funding, at least on the municipal level, like pretty much every year, whether or not education, public libraries, healthcare, tons of other social services get cut or not, whether it's a recession year or a big, good economic year. And I don't think that right now in the middle of a pandemic where nurses have been working around the clock without even a dollar of extra hazard pay, where there's millions of people unemployed, where people are at risk of eviction, I think that there's other ways to put funding into this program, which may or may not be good. I think that they can implement pay freezes or hiring freezes or different ways to reallocate money that already exists without having to spend some, like, general provincial money. Someone made a point about it being money that was actually kind of found from police in investigations of illegal activity and whatnot, but I think that generally right now, putting $6 million extra dollars into police, especially because it is such a timely issue that we know is not doing great, I don't think it makes sense, and I think that it does make sense for WUSA to advocate on our students' behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Counselor Joel Lecleere-Bicott. Sorry, Marie.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Guy actually touched on a lot of what I wanted to say, but I have a few points that I want to address, just in terms of the first part of this conversation. So to go back a bit on what Guy said, while most of us in this conversation today are not directly affected by anything to do with negative experiences with the police, campus police, regional police, or anything else, it is something that affects our constituents every day, maybe not necessarily on campus, but in the Waterloo region or in the opposite direction. And even though our mandate for advocacy is worded maybe a bit more vaguely than it would apply to in this situation, it does it is our mandate as counselors, as WUSA, as Rais, or even just as students, as individuals, as part of the larger community, to advocate for those students who deserve to have a safe campus experience and have the choice and the option to go to the police if they wish to and not be discriminated against or treated differently as they would to a white counterpart or another more prevalent student in terms of their looks or their race on campus. And following that, a lot of our stances, or not stances, comments that have been made today have gone towards saying that we should not advocate for this at this current moment, and I have mixed opinions on this, but it is my opinion that advocacy even on a small scale is worth something. By choosing to not advocate at all, we are portraying to our students, to our constituents, to the university, to our staff, that WUSA is specifically deciding not to take a stance on something that affects a large portion of their students. So while advocacy might, on a government level, a letter to the premier might not do much on this issue, we're still portraying to a student that we're representing their voice, which I believe is important, as it is our job as counselors, executives, and so on. Finally, there's a not finally, sorry, there is another point brought up about campus police not carrying arms or not necessarily being harmful to students. I think it's important, again, to note that negative experiences with police, whether it be campus, provincial, regional, or whatever it is, doesn't have to be violent in order to be harmful, hurtful, or degrading to your race, your gender, your sexual orientation, or any other minority. So finally, I think on this issue right now, many people are choosing a very extreme stance to say we shouldn't respond at all because we're not informed, our constituents are not informed. The easiest solution to this problem in my eyes is to move this to our council meeting on August 23rd in two weeks to give ourselves and the constituents a chance to do the research. The research is available. It's not difficult to get educated on this topic, and so we should be, instead of making a harsh and maybe rash decision right now, putting out statements to our constituents and so on, asking them to educate themselves on the issue and then give a feedback, as well as educating ourselves on the issues that we can be more prepared to address this at our following council meeting. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I will now move on to Alexandra Eyre.
Okay, thank you, Abby. I think we've established now that there are lots of positions on this issue, and this is a controversial issue. Now, I really respect there are a lot of, there are a lot of things in the motion that I actually agree with. Funding, social services, reforming the police. In terms of provincial policy, I agree with you there, and so do many students. However, just in terms of this policy, I have concerns that a simple defunding in the police isn't going to stop systemic racism, it's not going to stop brutality or misconduct, and I'm concerned that removing the ability of police to respond and prevent crimes will disproportionately impact negatively people of color. So we do need to recognize there are legitimate sides to both sides of this debate, but that's not the question here. The question here, is it right for WUSA to take stances on more partisan issues that aren't around post-secondary education? Now, there was a time when WUSA, or Feds as it was known back in the day, did do this. I did try to take stances on things like foreign policy, on culture war issues and so forth, and the result of that was rather than students working together to advocate for policies that would affect students, it ended up turning council into a debate club over issues that weren't related to post-secondary education. And the ultimate outcome of that was the organization that was pushing for some of these issues ended up losing a referendum to get it defunded by about 8,000 votes to 1,000 votes. I think it's time that we leave a lot of division and bringing partisan issues into fence in the past, and that's not to say we, as counselors or people who used to be counselors, should be avoiding these issues. There's lots of great ways to get involved and make sure that you're representing these issues. Get involved with a political party, get involved with a service or club that's pushing this issue. The question is, what is the most appropriate venue for this type of advocacy? And I don't believe WUSA is that appropriate venue. Our charter clearly states that we're looking for the common interests of students, not controversial issues. Policy 9F specifically identifies and limits advocacy policies to be, and I quote, "with regards to philosophical matters or government policies relating to or associated with post-secondary education or university policies." While many points brought up about police reform may be correct, this isn't something that WUSA should be stepping into, and I'm also very concerned that if this is something WUSA takes a stance on, it's going to cause a backlash, and it will cause opt-outs because people would see, students would see that rather than focusing on post-secondary issues and rather than bringing people together to focus on what we can agree on, it's going to be divisive and take more controversial, more partisan issues. So I hope whether or not you agree with this policy, we could all recognize that there is an appropriate time and place to be pushing for advocacy like this, and WUSA isn't the place to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Matthew Garretts. Your time begins now.
Hello, and thank you, Madam Speaker. Obviously, there is a lot to do with evidence and the value of this topic that is going to be discussed within this debate. I wanted to touch on this element of, you know, getting involved with political issues or getting involved with controversial issues. I first want to say I do think this is a political issue. Anything that affects policy, anything that exists in the public domain is political to some degree, and that's not a bad thing. We take multiple stances on political issues. We just don't tend to identify them as such. You know, we advocate on OSAP, we advocate on lower tuition. Those are both things that are ultimately political, but they aren't seen as political because they aren't controversial. But things are only controversial because we disagree. If things became outbound simply because there was disagreement, that means that any one person or any two people or any however many people could have a veto just by making something controversial. And I also wanted to touch a little bit to this topic and having it constrained within post-secondary education. We advocate on stuff outside post-secondary education all the time. One of the loudest voices or loudest topics that I heard about when I was Vice President Education was on off-campus housing. That's really no different when you're talking about student safety and well-being. It's not something to do with post-secondary education at all. Neither is sexual violence prevention, neither is transit. These are political. They don't have to do with post-secondary education. Yet they're things that we advocate on, and we advocate on them because we recognize that they are important to the well-being of students. I personally, and this is apart from the rest of my argument, I don't think we should wait for, you know, a black student to be shot to make a response to this. I think we have the opportunity to be proactive here. Similarly to the fact that I don't think that, you know, we should have to wait until somebody sexually assaulted to make a stance on sexual assault. We advocate even when it affects only a small number of students. There's few cyclists, but we still welcome investments in cycling infrastructure. And despite the fact we have few cyclists and that bike lanes take away from road space that, you know, other students use, right? We're capable of making decisions based on a small number of students. It's not simply the case of majority rules. We think about well-being in, you know, complex nuanced matters. So I think this is political. I don't think there's any reason for people not to engage if they think the policing does legitimately affect student safety, especially racialized student safety. And if the evidence does show that, you know, community services reduce crime, reduce the need for militarization of police, because I know that, you know, I think militarization of police is something that nobody wants across the political spectrum. People would prefer, if there was no crime at all, people would prefer minimalism when it comes to policing, making sure that, you know, we can be safe without that. Thank you, Abby. I finally just want to say that, you know, we can advocate for things, and they're not partisan because they're received on partisan lines. You know, stuff can be received on partisan lines, but that doesn't mean that you and yourself are saying, you know, "I'm advocating for this because this is what this party stands for." You're advocating on it because that's what you believe and that's what you've arrived at based on the evidence and your values. If stuff was received on partisan lines and that was put something off-bounds, I never would have been able to advocate for OSAP and when OSAP was cut. But I think there is value in advocating to people that we disagree with. That's what a lot of you are doing right now. It's what I'm doing right now. But it's also useful to advocate to people who can change policy in the future. Even the CFS, with whom I have disagreements, and I know conservative parties have disagreements with across the country, get meetings with conservative members across the country every year. I think we can respectfully disagree with government policy. We can do so firmly, and we can do so in line with our values, and I think, you know, today is a chance to discuss what those values are. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm going to move on to Associate Vice President Rodney.
Thank you.
Your format begins now.
Great, thank you. So I think I'd like to start by saying that, like, as a Black person, as a Black queer person, experiencing this conversation, this conversation is largely intellectually violent. I think to attempt to convince WUSA executive that it's not the place to intervene and advocate on the issue of defunding police is very concerning to me. I'd be interested to know how many of you have actually taken the time to specifically interview or interact with Black and Indigenous students specifically as it relates to this issue. You know, there's always UW Base, UESA, ACS, National Society of Black Engineers, and other student-run organizations that you may visit. The language that has been employed in the statements that have been read out is racist and anti-Black. I'd like to remind you all that there are Black students on this campus and that this issue specifically impacts their ability to access and thrive within the academy. Now, I know that a lot of you wouldn't have heard stories like this, but there are incidences that I've been privy to where Black student events have been overpoliced for literally no reason. Nothing was happening, but there were 10 cops standing within the event of one Black student's party. There was also a time where, you know, calling the police on students was used as a threat. If you're unable to see how this directly impacts student experiences, you feel free to email me at equity@usa.ca. So I think to posit this issue as one that is simply controversial and not severely impacting and hindering the quality of lives of fellow Canadians, including Black students, is deeply concerning. The effectiveness of investing in community-led public safety has been researched, and it is surely not new. Like I said in the chat, there is lots of resources on this. A quick Google search will be able to show you all of this. Using funds that would be allocated to police to instead be invested in development of community is not radical, and I'm very interested and concerned that, you know, counselors are thinking of this as something that is just outside of WUSA's purview. You know, as it stands, policing isn't working. Most of the incidents to which police respond are actually non-criminal events and are events that actually could be very easily resolved using de-escalation methods, you know, not policing crime and not policing poverty, sorry, which is what a lot of these things, a lot of these issues of violence come out of. Robberies are typically- Robberies are typically because people don't have the resources to feed themselves or their families. And it's not radical to, it's not radical to consider why these issues are happening. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the term "an upstream approach", that the reason why many of these things are happening is because our current approach to society lacks vision and upstream thinking. And so, you know, I say that there is historical precedent that describes the ways that policing disproportionately negatively impacts Black and Indigenous communities. Doug Ford himself has noted that there is in fact systemic racism in the institution of policing. And I would also like to point out that much of the funding that goes to policing is actually going to police's salaries. They actually make on average ninety-nine thousand dollars per year. All this information you can find either on CBC or on Stats Canada. And I would strongly, strongly, strongly like to urge, I'm sorry, I can't see your messages here, Abby. The chat feature is closed. Yeah, I would just, I would strongly like to urge for councillors speaking out against this to take the time to, one, read up on the resources, read up on the information before positing that this is not within WUSA's purview. Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Victoria. We're going to move on to Amanda. Amanda, could you state your first and last name for the minutes before you begin speaking?
Hi, my name's Amanda Fitzpatrick. I am the Past VP Student Life. Thank you so much for having me. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about is what the money is going to directly. So I know a few people have mentioned that two of the things that this money is going to be going toward are trafficking. And generally, these things are brought up whenever we talk about defunding the police because how dare you take away money from sexual violence survivors and blah, blah, blah. But when you talk to survivors of sexual violence about their interactions with the police, they will tell you that it was extremely negative. As a survivor of sexual assault and someone that has gone to the police after attempted trafficking, I can tell you that it was an extremely traumatic experience and the police made that experience for me and other survivors incredibly worse. And I would not go to the police for anything. Like, I would not feel comfortable with that. And you can hear the same thing from other survivors. So bringing up sexual violence and trafficking as a reason to continue funding the police really doesn't make sense because the people that are involved in sexual violence work, like, if you talk to Amanda Cook, if you talk to people that are involved in sexual violence on campus, they will tell you that the way that policing works right now is not helpful for victims and it's actively dangerous. Like, in my year as the VP Student Life overseeing the incident reporting system that we have within WUSA, almost every single incident I had in some way had to do with the police, campus police specifically. I had multiple incidences of police laughing at sexual violence victims on campus, at their residences, after being called, police telling them that it didn't really happen, that it wasn't a big deal. Like, I have heard so many stories about the police laughing at victims on our campus. This isn't something that we need. This is incredibly violent. And if we want to be supporting victims, that means reimagining what the system looks like and actually being here to support survivors. So don't use that as some scapegoat or some reason to not want to support this because if you are going to be thinking about having a trauma-informed approach and you're actually thinking about survivors, continuing to fund the police is not the right approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. We will now move on to Vice President Town. Your four minutes starts now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to take my speaking time just to address a misconception that I've heard. And the misconception is that this advocacy is not going to take away from other work. I think I speak for myself and my other executives and Associate Vice Presidents when I say that we are in this job because we care about students and what they have to say to us. I work a frankly unhealthy amount of hours every week and I've ran my mental health into the ground because I want to address all of the concerns of all of my constituents and take on as much advocacy as I can to address the issues that are affecting students right now. There is absolutely so much going on in the world and I don't think that it's my place to tell a constituent that their issue is less important to me just because they're the only one that brought it to me. It's my job to advocate for students, no matter what the issue is, and that's what I bring to the job. I disagree that this is a partisan issue. At my heart, I believe that it's an issue about safety. It's an issue about students' access to education. And that is why it affects students. If students don't feel safe, if students don't have equitable access, then it is affecting post-secondary education at its very core of why there's not a proportional number of Black students on our campus. It's a systemic issue that can only be addressed through lots of change over a long amount of time. And I ask councillors today to consider how their constituents' comments might be affected by what they have personally experienced and they might not be taking a broad and diverse perspective when they are speaking on this issue. I feel it would be irresponsible of me not to take advantage of the current climate to drive advocacy for student safety forward. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to ask my roommate how he felt about this issue. During our undergrad, he wasn't involved in the Black student groups on campus, and that was his choice. He was involved in communities through other means. And yet, in our conversation, he still expressed concerns about policing. And he was excited and proud when I told him that we wanted to write a letter about this issue. I fully acknowledge the points that speakers have made about this announcement specifically. And the reason that I really want to respond and open this discussion with government right now is because they are talking about it. So we have the opportunity to respond. We have the opportunity to continue this conversation with government and to effect change. Like I said before, I don't honestly think that I'm going to be able to change where this six million dollars is going, but I want to change where the next six million dollars is going, where the next ten million, a hundred million dollars is going in order to change the system that we live in so that it better supports our students and of all colors, of all backgrounds, of all sexual orientations. And that is why we called this meeting and why we're bringing this issue forward today.
Thank you, Vice President Town. I'll now move to Vice President Abunaga, who will speak for four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sorry. So to address a lot of, a lot of things that have been said by speakers on this main motion, I want to ask everybody who is on this call right now about specifically the claim of this not being an academic issue and the question that I have for all of you who think that this is a valid claim. My question to you is what part of this does not relate to Black Indigenous students? So I urge you to take that back, think about it a little bit because, again, key word here, students. They're Black and Indigenous students. It's not a controversial issue, it's a human rights issue. And to address the claims that have been made that we could just provide more training. Well, as mentioned before by Victoria, the Associate Vice President Equity, by Aisha, the Race Coordinator, police reform does not work and this is based on research. And about the claim that having this motion not being informed, I highly disagree with that. Please check the references that are included in the PowerPoint presentation that was presented to all of you today. So in terms of that, no, I do disagree with you about not being informed. This motion was brought forward based on strong research. And as mentioned before, Google is free. So if you want to do your own research, then go to Google, literally look it up, and then you'll find a lot of resources that you can gain information from. Now, I also want to, I also want to talk about the claim or go back to the claim of this not being an academic issue. Black Indigenous students make up a large portion of our student body and must be considered in advocacy efforts. Their education, as stated multiple times, as well as their safety, is in harm due to how policing endangers their health and wellbeing. The humanity of Black Indigenous people of color and people of color is therefore not a controversial issue, but a human rights issue. And any debate to the contrary screams your privilege and incompetence. You know what a controversial issue is? Proctoring. And I remember that, I think, last council meeting or the meeting before, we talked about proctoring and we had a conversation about that. That was in itself a controversial issue. And a lot of you brought up their, brought forward how they felt about it. And we did, we passed, well, we didn't pass a motion, but we put a motion in. Yeah, we put a motion to a vote and then we voted on it. Anyways, also going back to this not being an academic issue in quotation marks, if we are part of WUSA, the Ontario Undergraduate Student Alliance, who advocate for academic issues and things that occur in post-secondary institutions, then I'd urge you to go and look up their policy papers. And there's specifically a policy paper about Indigenous students. And I want to read this out to you and have you think about this a little bit and go back to your claim about this not being an academic issue. So the introduction to the policy paper written in November eighth, twenty seventeen, "The reconciliation between Indigenous and non-Indigenous populations is not easily achieved. Nevertheless, it is essential. Within the scope of Ontario's university sector, this means ensuring that Indigenous peoples are encouraged and enabled to engage and succeed throughout their post-secondary careers and beyond. The best way to ensure that universities can provide engaging and meaningful experiences for Indigenous students is to pursue a path towards reconciliation via decolonization and indigization." So I think that's pretty much it for what I wanted to say, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. We will now move on to President Wong.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so, thank you for all the speakers before me who have brought up their points, including from both sides of the argument. I would like, so I am, for those who doesn't know, I am speaking on behalf of the Mathematic Society as their president. And for those who might not know, half of the undergraduate demographic of the math faculty is international student. So from Vice President Nada and Vice President Mike, sorry, I'm bad at pronouncing last names. They brought up a good point that Black students are students of the undergraduate students. That should be our constituents of our organization. However, what about the international student body? Those are, they too are your constituents. However, during when COVID, the pandemic rose in North America, international students faced a problem about choosing where to go. Plane tickets are getting canceled, plane tickets are being risen if they wish to go home. And campus residents are being closed down. Many international students, especially like from Eastern Asia, like myself, from Chinese, who are Chinese nationals, we face xenophobia in North American cities, kind of Toronto, Canadian cities or United States cities that because we are Asian, we are Chinese, we will be bringing viruses. We did not receive, these students did not receive the support of WUSA. We were mocked for our efforts to protect ourselves by wearing masks when before CDC recommended those masks, recommended masks as a mandatory preventive care. Why didn't WUSA protect that? However, I'm not saying that one advocacy is more important than the other. I totally disagree. If WUSA goes down this path, then WUSA is setting a precedent that they should work on every single advocacy point for every democratic subset. Can WUSA do that? And so, those are just my questions and concerns about WUSA's stance, making a public stance on this statement. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wong. We'll move on to Councillor Yumao. Your four minutes begins now.
So I just want to refocus this kind of discussion on the specific decision that we're making today and kind of share my thought process on whether to vote in favor or not of this. So in looking at the motion at hand, there's really, I see it as two components. First of all is, do I support the motion at hand? If I saw this proposed by any other organization, if this was like an opinion piece, like a YouTube comment or something, would I agree with it as an individual? Is it logical? Are the recommendations supported by evidence? And is it in the best interest that these recommendations are adopted? And my general impression, not to speak on behalf of other people, is that the majority of us here today do believe these things hold true. And then the second thing that we need to consider, which I think like most people who have expressed concerns about this motion have been focusing on, is the impact on our organization by adopting this motion. What does it mean for us? What kind of downstream impacts will it have? So questions like, are there going to be consequences of taking this stance on our ability to work on other advocacy issues? Is a setting a precedent to create an environment wherein students feel as if WUSA is going kind of on a tangent, is not really focusing on specific issues? So my initial, like, I totally agree with the motion and I strongly believe that Vice President Town can can advocate for it in a way in which I feel comfortable. But given all the kind of discussion that's happening on this, like, I I feel on some level that, like, there's a lot of questions regarding how we're advocating on this and whether or not it's impacting other issues. And like, we've been reassured that, you know, this isn't going to impact other issues. But I think more so, we might want to focus on the implementation of this, like, making sure that as this motion is passed, that it doesn't have these kind of downstream side effects. I think we should be focusing on more of how it's implemented rather than whether or not we should be implementing it or not. Because while this definitely is an important issue, and I do think that it can fall within the scope of what WUSA and WUSA do as an organization, like, there are other issues that pertain specifically to students where we are one of the few organizations that are advocating on it. Versus this issue, there's a lot of other organizations working on it. So we kind of need to balance when we are the only ones who can speak on this, making sure that we're doing that. And then also taking the opportunity to partner with other organizations working on larger issues and kind of using our limited resources in the best capacity as possible. So in the end of the day, I'm still trying to decide which way I'm going to vote. But like, I would like us to be considering these things or at least to take this in consideration. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, councillor. I'll now move on to Seneca Velling. You have four minutes.
Hi, thank you very much, Madam President. For those of you who do not know me on the line, my name is Seneca Velling. I'm the former VP of Operations and Finance. I called into this meeting after I saw the story on Instagram, mostly out of curiosity. And it's definitely been interesting to hear the conversation evolve. I think it's important to begin with saying that there are a number of Black Indigenous and people of color on the line who are offering their direct experiences in dealing with police, be it campus police, Ontario Police or otherwise, or KW Police. And it's important that you guys listen to them and consider what their view on success or failure in our current policing infrastructure is. I think kind of further to that, there's been some good consultation brought up that, or consultation responses brought up, that there are mixed opinions from students. And I don't think it's fair to characterize that all of the mixed opinion must be coming from white students. But honestly, that's a really easy thing for me to say as a straight white guy. It's a, might be very different in reality. And so I think, I think there is a consultation element that is a fair concern there. And so I think, I think there is a consultation element that is a fair, a fair concern there. But if if councillors' concerns are with respect to the scope and applicability of the suggestion from the executive, particularly with respect to the objects that was named by a number of councillors and how it aligns the objects or relevance to academics. I might suggest that if you don't like what's written, offer an amendment that you would be satisfied with. Is is reframing or at least reframing part of the advocacy ask to be a local focus on campus police important? Because when I was VPOF, um and Amanda, my co-executive and I, we dealt with, we dealt with uh violence and harassment of people of color in the SLC. And then we had to change our, we had to rethink the approaches in in the organization to how we manage the building a little bit. Because they hadn't been changed in years. So there's definitely, there are definitely experiences like that. And that to me, that was just a taste of something that I never experienced as a white guy. And that other people live with every day in their life. So I think it's important to consider those things and and maybe maybe that satisfies some of the concerns on the line from councillors who think that there's no, there's no local scope or academic scope. Is tie it back to UW if that's part of your concern. And and then I guess the second thing is that I'd ask you to think about is, okay, so if you don't support the motion, what can WUSA do to better support groups if it isn't this? Can can WUSA give additional funds so that Raze could hire part-time staff or co-op staff to support their own advocacy directly? As some councillors suggested that that would be more appropriate than WUSA as an organization doing it. I don't know, I I would pose those questions for you guys to think about. But at the end of the day, I would encourage you to think about what options exist. Consult students and consider what they want to see and at the end of the day, listen to the people who are affected. Um, thank you very much for my time to speak, Madam President, and that's all I've got to say. Good luck to everybody debating this and hopefully you come to a resolution that you find agreeable.
Uh, John, you have a point of order.
Yes, Madam Speaker, we are two minutes away from our scheduled adjournment time. Um, I would like to hear a motion to extend the meeting.
Uh, thank you, John. Um, as I would like to have some more time to hear the direct responses and uh bring this motion to a vote. I would like to motion to extend, our Cannon has motion to extend um the adjournment of our meeting to, John, could you read out the statement that we've prepared?
Sure thing. It resolved that the adjournment time for this meeting is extended to six P M. Councillors may vote in the general chat of the council teams.
So all voting councillors, please move over to the
Abby, do we have a seconder?
Oh, correct. Um, I can second the motion. Cannon is the mover, I'll second. Um, there is a motion to amend to five P M.
Uh, that's six, oh, amend the motion, oh.
So oh, Ben has recommended um adjourning when the discussion is exhausted because any anyone can shut the meeting down. Oh, nope, never mind, I'm reading this wrong. Uh, one, one moment, everyone.
Abby, I think you can clarify, um Ben, the Chair of the Board, was asking why are we extending the meeting time? And I was saying that according to some interpretations of Robert's rules, the meeting could then be shut down after adjournment time.
Thank you, John. I would like everyone to have an opportunity to further discussion. Based on how sixteen responses have taken us an hour and I suspect that we may have more people who would wish to speak after the eleven people we currently have on the speaking list. Um, I would ask the Assembly if we could um adjourn at six P M to allow everyone a fair and equal opportunity to speak before voting on uh the motion as it's presented.
Uh, so Abby, are we going to have a votes then on the amendments to the motion that's
Yes, yes, so um
I will put it in the chat, in the
Thank you. Uh, so motion to amend at five P M um by Councillor Dong, uh seconded by uh Councillor Schwartz. A reminder to all councillors to move over to the general teams channel. Uh, if you are voting, thumbs up is in favor, uh against is the surprise react and sad face is an abstention.
Currently we're voting on the amendment.
Correct, we're voting on the amendment uh to amend the motion to adjourn at five P M. As there were a few people who just needed to be added to the teams, I'm going to give them thirty seconds to cast their vote. Uh, motion passes. Uh, the amended statement now reads uh be resolved, the adjournment time for this meeting is extended to five P M. John, if you would, can you edit the statement in the general teams? And then I'll remind councillors that if you are in favor, you will thumbs up. Um, if you are against, you will surprise react and if you are abstaining, you will sad react. I will give councillors thirty more seconds to cast their vote. Uh, motion passes, we're extending the meeting, the adjournment time to five P M. Um, I will now ask the Assembly if there are any other individuals who wish to speak uh for their first first speaking term. Now, if you do not wish to speak, we will be moving on to direct responses. Seeing no additional ones in the chat, uh we will now begin our second speaking order. Uh, beginning with Victoria Shi. I'll remind all councillors and attendees that if you are directly responding to a statement that another councillor has said, I ask that you follow the instructions uh above, where if you wish to respond to another councillor, you will address myself, the speaker as Madam Speaker, uh with respect to who you are directly responding to's statement and then move on from there. Um, that being said, Victoria Shi, your two minutes begins now.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. So with respect to Councillor Sharma's uh points, um I first wanted to say that I I do agree with uh with VP Town about um being reminded of our privilege. Um, and that just because our social location is perhaps as a um person of color, this does not equate to having the same experiences and the same level of racial marginalization as black or indigenous students. And so unless we are black or indigenous students, I don't believe that we are able to say that we have the same experiences. Myself, as an Asian woman, I can tell you that I have experienced racism, but I can tell you it is not the same kind of racism. Um, this is not what we are talking about. Um, and then secondly, again, I think that the point that this is, um, this is a human rights issue that, you know, perhaps while political, it still matters and deserves to be spoken about. Um, I think that that has already been exhausted by the speakers before me, thank you very much. Um, thirdly, the fact that uh it was brought up that um this issue should be dealt with solely by Raze. Um, I wholeheartedly disagree with this as Raze is a, uh, it's a student-run organization that is unpaid. And compared to WUSA and our resources, they are quite small. I do not believe, and especially in the current climate, the amount of work from paid organizations being shifted onto the shoulders of Raze is quite frankly embarrassing. And moving on, addressing the issue of opt-outs, I believe that there will be opt-outs either way because we are taking a stance on a controversial issue. And so I think that it can be equally argued that if we do not make a statement, there will also be opt-outs. And so I do not believe that sacrificing our own integrity and the and ensuring the safety um of our students is worth preserving our image. I do not agree with this at all. Um, and so with that, uh, thank you very much to everyone who has spoken before me and thank you so much for the time to speak.
Thank you, President Shi. I will move on to Councillor Sharma. You, your two minutes begins now.
Um, thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I reply to Victoria Shi's, Councillor, President Shi's responses. I'd like to finish my statement, which I think would really help bring my point I was trying to bring before. That instead of like, I will just kind of continue reading my statement. I would like that the council not take a stance on this issue as it's not a place to do so and let external organizations who have this mandate and resources to be leaders in these efforts. Or at the very least, we redefine the question to be closer to home, that is campus police and fund our services like Raze and groups like Equity for Who, who are actually better placed to address these things. I would also like to ask us, like, what is the role of student union in here? Especially when Raze was created to advocate on such topics because the organization as a whole decided it's not our place to do so. Instead of adopting this motion, I would like to ask this party to direct funding to support these initiatives indirectly, such as WUSA has already allocated eight thousand dollars for equity issues this year. And we could use that money to support our services, maybe do a letter-writing campaign to the private, the premier's office, which will be much more effective than one letter from WUSA, whereas every student can have their own opinion. And that's, and that's where also are the political exposure we might get after having this stance. I don't think we should, there could be consequences of us being compared to CFS, which is all be labeled as Marxist, which the Ford government has already tried to do so during SCI. And I do not think it's worth it to ruin our entire relationship with the government based on this. And I agree that everyone has their different opinions, but keep an open mind, like I am keeping open, I'm giving different suggestions. So hopefully we can come to a compromise after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. I will now move on to Councillor Dylan.
All right, thanks, Madam Speaker. Um, in regards to the Reddit post by John, thanks, John, for making the Reddit post. Um, I think, you know, it was a good initiative to make it, but I think we should also understand and consider that the Waterloo subreddit um is not wholly representative of the student body and is not taking into account the experiences of several students across U Waterloo, um especially those marginalized in our university system like black and indigenous students. So I feel that most of the comments on Reddit and by the councillors here have that like that have been spoken have basically separated the experience of students on campus um from black and indigenous people as a whole. But the reality is, as so many people have mentioned, that there are plenty of black and indigenous students on campus whose academic performances have been affected um by like by overpolicing and by issues like this. Because as so many people have mentioned, a lot of what affects academics is in academic nature. And a lot of times if we want to, you know, ensure academic welfare and ensure academic success, we have to advocate for things that are outside of this campus. So in response to Cannon's point, sure, we could talk about campus police. But a lot of times what affects students isn't just campus police. That's basically like saying, okay, we can talk about, you know, we can advocate for a campus shuttle, but we shouldn't advocate um for better transit service from GRT, uh in my opinion. So I think a lot of those things tie into this. Um, and then in addition, I think saying now is not the time to do this. Um, and now is not the time to make a statement is foolish considering that the effects of overpolicing have been widely studied. Um, and so many movements have occurred within the past ten years that have resulted in no real change. And, you know, black and indigenous people and black and indigenous students are still being overpoliced. So I think that while may, while this may be controversial, not doing anything here sets a very dangerous precedent that WUSA will not fight for its students and it will not follow its own charter and promote the welfare and interest of its students. I quote, um, you know, if their experiences are deemed controversial by other students and society in general, which I think is wrong. Um, and it's, it's a very dangerous precedent that we can't follow going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. I'll now move on to Councillor Dong. Thank you, Counselor. I'll now move on to Counselor Dawn. Your two minutes begins now.
I'd like to express my and my constituents' concern for the ramifications of moving forward with this motion. Focusing our platform on defunding the police in a rushed and reactive way will discredit us to students. It will also risk contributing to discrediting this movement as a whole when we are called out for virtue signaling and pushing non-student political beliefs. Thus, as much as I may wish to see the goals of this motion realized, I can't in good faith support this motion. Before this motion was brought to Students Council, the executive team already took action to publish a stance on behalf of WUSA. After significant requests from councilors for more discourse, the executive team decided to move this decision to the Committee of Presidents. Now this motion has finally been made available for public discussion, but student councilors were not elected on political stances either. Setting the precedent going into the future that the executive team or cops can set the political stance of the entire undergraduate student body risks future incidents of radical political advocacy from a student association that will no longer represent its students. I happen to be in agreement with this particular push to correct social and government injustices, and I believe that many of us here today are as well. But what if next time we aren't? If we move forward through this method, we open the door for the possibility for anyone to set WUSA's sights on whatever political advocacy they want. I agree that WUSA shouldn't be turning its back on this very, very real issue. However, I hope that I can remind us all that this is not an issue that requires WUSA's input immediately. And we, as an organization representing a diversity of students, we have the luxury of time to decide the best possible way to benefit our students, both in this movement, both in this moment and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now move on to President Hymers.
Thank you, Abby. What we've been calling partisan issues and the idea...
Sorry, I have to interrupt you. A point of order is interruptible, Abby.
Yes, sorry, I didn't notice that in the chat, John. Edward, go ahead.
Can I ask the Speaker?
Everyone else, please mute your mics.
Can I ask the Speaker that the rules of debate established early on are followed and monitored?
In reference to the chat or in reference to the individual speaking?
The chat.
Thank you, Counselor. I will remind all members of the chat that we are using the chat function to help monitor debate. If you would like to be added to the speaking order, please indicate a 1 or a 2, and we will add you to the speaking order that you see on the screen. And I will also be including the remaining time for all speakers in the chat as well, for those to reference. So please refrain from conversation in the chat. I apologize, President. I have restarted your time. Please, please continue.
Thank you. The idea that WUSA cannot or should not take a stance on what some have been calling partisan issues because of the idea that it sidetracks councils from issues related to post-secondary education is deeply, deeply problematic. This is absolutely an issue associated with post-secondary students in education, and it's not a controversial issue. And the fact that we're speaking about Black and Indigenous lives as though they are controversial is harmful and it's violent. Today, councilors have demonstrated their own privilege and their complicity in systemic racism by intellectualizing the lived experience of Black and Indigenous people of color and forcing them to defend their humanity and their access to human rights. Policing on campus and in the community affects students' ability to access education and safety on and off campus. And the argument that we can't take a stance on this issue because we don't want to lose funding for the benefit of WUSA remaining around so that we can advocate for students is genuinely so disturbing. I won't even get into the fact that this is a capitalistic demonstration of systemic racism, but seriously, what issues are we supposed to be advocating for if not the safety of students? What is more important? Is absolutely the appropriate time and place for this discussion and for WUSA to support students? And if you think it's not an issue that affects students every single day, I encourage you to rethink where you're coming from. Take a step back and listen to students who are part of our constituency, listen to what they're telling us. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on Guy Brodsky. Your two minutes begins now.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Speaker.
Thanks, Madam Speaker. I think the previous point is very important and very valid. As we've heard from past executives of WUSA, from current councilors, from racialized students, this is not really, like, what's up for debate right now is the motion, but what's up for debate right now is not whether or not this impacts our students. We've seen that it does. We've had people take the time out of their day to come tell you that it is, and to say that some constituents think that other issues are more important as an excuse to not actually support this issue is, it's a little bit violent. It's really not what WUSA should be doing. If there's issues with capacity or whatnot, which have been, which have been addressed by both Meghan and Matthew Garrettts, there are, there's definitely capacity to address this. It's a very important issue to be addressing. And there are definitely other great alternatives, such as funding RACE, or at least funding it more, and organizing letter-writing campaigns, and engaging other students in more advocacy as well, which would be great. But all that is to say that this is still, we've heard from sexual assault survivors that the police don't actually help that much. We've seen the references and been showed the references and the articles and the academic research that shows that this is not necessarily a good $6 million expenditure on behalf of provincial government. As I mentioned before, like, healthcare and education are experiencing cuts right now. Education is, if you don't want to say the policing is relevant to us, education is hella relevant, and it's literally on the same docket of the provincial government and is, yeah, it's experiencing cuts. Sorry, this wasn't super eloquent, but yeah, just listen to the people that are talking. Whether or not this might be a hard decision to make for WUSA right now, and if people might be opting out of fees, like, that sucks, but it is a sucky issue that needs to be dealt with.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you. I will now move on to Counselor Hunt.
Thank you, Abby. This is our response to Victoria. With respect to the associate base, President Rodney issues, instances of issues involving police on campus are brought up, and I 100% agree with her statements on those here. WUSA can and absolutely should advocate for better policing on campus. Stories relayed by past Vice President's student life with police laughing at victims on campuses is absolutely disgusting. I had absolutely no idea that these kind of things were happening on campus, and this needs to change. Myself and my constituents would like to see change come to campus, and I would encourage the executive to reevaluate WUSA's position on this with respect to the scope. As a separate note, this meeting was called due to multiple councilors and directors pointing out that this motion is outside the current scope of WUSA's advocacy. I repeat, outside the current scope of WUSA's advocacy. It is, council is well-placed to bring this within WUSA's advocacy if it so chooses. I take issue, however, with bringing a motion to council and telling councilors who express opposition that they are racist. Luckily, sorry, lastly, I would like to state that I absolutely and unconditionally support each recommendation put forward by Vice President Education Town. This, if this were the extent of the motion, I would have no problems whatsoever. In response to the chat, does RACE need more funds? This is something that we can do and that I would support. As my last statement, this meeting has no longer become constructive, and I will return when it is.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now move on to Counselor Sharma. You have two minutes.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Go ahead.
Madam Speaker, repeatedly, we have tried to make sure the conversations in the chats are just about how the debate's occurring and not personal comments on anyone or any personal comments. But this has been repeatedly broken by the other side, so could you please make sure it's not happening again? We are not doing that, so maybe they should not be doing that either. They should be getting in line like everyone else and talking when it's their turn.
Thank you, Counselor. I acknowledge that the chat is continuing to be used for conversation. Please refrain from having personal conversations in the chat. I would like to continue with our speaking order to give everyone an opportunity to speak. I would like to add anyone who would like to speak to the speaking order. So please, if you would like to speak, I would like to give you time to do so through the rules that we have established as an assembly. That being, that being said, Counselor Sharma, would you like to speak?
Speaker, I've lost my thought. Can someone else go before, and then I can connect my thoughts and come back?
You will have to wait until your next speaking turn.
Sure, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now move on to President Shi.
Hi, apologies. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. This is a response to President Wang, and I do hear the advocacy for international students, which is of course important as well. But there are obviously multiple issues that we should be passionate about. There was a statement issued about that, and that is not to say that this solved it, just as issuing a statement on defunding the police will not be something that will solve it, but it is what we are doing in our power to help the situation. And so using that as an argument to justify why perhaps we should not be looking, we should not be doing more, why we should not issue this statement to help Black students, like, what is the alternative to that? Is just simply not caring about racialized students, not caring about students of all different social locations. And so I believe that that is a damaging statement to make and a damaging comparison to make, especially as that is situational in response to a global pandemic compared to the centuries and centuries of built-in systemic racism that we uphold as an institution. Thank you. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, President Shi. I will now move on to Counselor Leo. Your two minutes begins now.
Thank you, Madam President. This is also with respect to Counselor Wang's statement. I do think that it is problematic to put forth one issue over the other and to compare one issue that has not had advocacy towards it to choose to not advocate for another issue. I think that as a council, there has been two other meetings. I personally did not know of this issue and know that it was a big issue. And now that it's brought to my attention, I do think it is something that is also as valid as the motion that we are trying to pass here. I think that a concern that has been brought up by many councilors is that WUSA should not advocate funding, resource, and time to this issue. It's something that should be said by WUSA executives themselves if they are willing or not to take on this issue. I also think that not choosing to support this issue because it is political is incorrect. Of course, at least on WUSA documents and on the WUSA website, campus safety is an advocacy priority of WUSA. And if we've had many students who are coming on this call or students in our own constituencies claiming that they feel unsafe because of the police, I think it is important for us to consider this conversation and to have steps moving forward to make sure they feel safe. So whether or not we agree with this specific motion, or if we do want to make amendments, is why we're here and to discuss about it. But for us to say that WUSA should not be involved with this at all is inappropriate and not correct, as this issue does follow under WUSA's advocacy, which is campus safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now move back to Counselor Sharma. Your two minutes begins now.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I would just like to make a general comment saying we are all trying to hear, we are all here to have a civilized conversations, calling each other names if you don't agree with their political opinions or just general opinions or their representatives' opinions. It's not a good way to have a debate on something. Secondly, the point brought up by Victoria Shi and Chanel Le, I'm sorry if I butchered your names, was that campus safety is a major issue. I totally agree with that. And that's why I did ask if, like, I would support, like, personally, I support this, but as an organization as WUSA, I think we should be supporting if this is something we are doing about campus police and not on provincial level. Like, if you want to figure out how we can improve campus police, I will fully support WUSA doing that. There is no doubt that we need to have a safe campus for our students. And secondly, I know this is a really contentious issue, so one suggestion if council would like to do is have a public side instead of council deciding on this, because it is a contentious issue, and I think everyone should have a right to word on this. Public side is basically a referenda, which is non-binding, so it won't bind the organization to anything, but it will let us hear the opinions of the students. And I think that's a good way to include everyone and make sure democracy works at its best. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now move on to Matthew Garrettts. Your two minutes begins now.
Hi, I wanted to make just a couple of points commenting on what others have said. I don't remember who exactly said what, but I just wanted to reiterate a couple things. Like, there's no bright lines, I think, on what is or isn't within the scope of WUSA's advocacy. I think honestly, it's tough, because, you know, if we say that we're only concerned about stuff that happens on campus, we should only be caring about, like, on-campus housing, not off-campus housing, where I think that that's just a clear counter example of where we have taken an, kind of, an opposite approach to what some people here are suggesting. And I just wanted to also touch on the point that I think people have raised about, you know, what the role of RACE is versus what the issue of WUSA is. And I agree that there are definitely things RACE can be doing and that I fully believe that they are doing. I like John's example of the fact that they could be doing a letter-writing campaign. I think that that is an amazing idea. But that's not to say that WUSA and RACE should not be collaborating. I mean, this is a collaboration. This is something that the executive have brought forward and they think is a priority. And, you know, it definitely does affect all students. It's not solely only the oppressed, only the people who are hurt to advocate for themselves. I mean, I look at a couple of things like the USC at Western. When the Student Choice Initiative came in, there were people who put their names on the line when it came to signing a letter saying that the government should go a different direction. Those were alumni who, you know, had jobs that might suffer as a result of that, but they did that because they felt strongly about it. And I'll also pull up the example of, you know, looking at the Civil Rights Acts in the US. A lot of that was enabled and pushed for by Black communities, and most of the success relies there.
I, your two minutes is up. Can you complete your sentence and then move on?
A lot of those results also came from, well, sorry, I want to finish my sentence. Those results ultimately needed to be voted on and advocated for by the people who were in power, and that's what they did. There's no reason that our approach shouldn't be the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to recognize Celine Isimbi. Sorry about the pronunciation. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is Celine Isimbi. I want to acknowledge the Black and Indigenous students present in this conversation, despite how violent it has been so far. As a Black student in this conversation, what I've heard has been very anti-Black and racist from certain councilors, and to reiterate... And to reiterate AVP Equity Rodney, this has been intellectually violent for all Black and Indigenous students listening right now. Furthermore, these debate rules, despite understanding the need for having guidelines in this type of conversation, has been harmful, especially since for the last two hours, the Black and Indigenous student experience both on campus during this meeting and in the Waterloo region has been erased. To all the non-Black and non-Indigenous students, you have the privilege of discussing and learning about this. This is our lived reality. Also, once again, Google is free. My humanity and that of my community is not political, nor is it controversial. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to speak with us today. I will now move on to Vice President Town. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe that we've heard a diverse set of perspectives today, and I believe that this discussion is getting a little bit circular. I would request if I could be the one to read the anonymous student to WUSA email. And following that, I would like to move to call the question.
Go ahead, Vice President Town.
In order to do that, I would need the copy of the email.
I can do it, but I will send it to you here in the chat.
So the anonymous email reads, "WUSA's power lies not in its name, but in the reputation it has with its members and the organizations that it advocates to. Thus, we have a plethora of options on the table, all of which can have the desired positive impact while mitigating the ramifications people are concerned about. WUSA can offer more support to RACE, UESA, and other affiliated student groups that improve students' lives however they think would be most helpful. WUSA can support RACE in championing a letter-writing campaign from students to the premier's office, which will demonstrate the genuine support for this movement for members. WUSA can back an investigation into campus police's activities, training, and impact on BIPOC students on campus. WUSA can launch a survey to students requesting widespread member input on students' priorities to WUSA's advocacy efforts to get a true mandate from students for the actions we take. I'm sure that if WUSA and its team refocuses its efforts to better ways we can use our resources, we can absolutely benefit our BIPOC students on this particular issue. But as a fee-paying minority student, I hope that we can evaluate our options on the table and select the best ways to represent and benefit our student body. I would like to thank the student who sent in this email. If you are listening, I think that these are some fantastic ideas, some of which are already in progress, and we will continue to work on such initiatives in the future. That being said, I move to call the question. This is a non-debatable motion. We are essentially voting on if we will vote on the motion. So moving to call the question, if you vote in favor, then, sorry, point of order from the speaker?
Most people who call the question can only be called at the beginning of the speaking turn, Megan. I'm sorry.
My apologies. Thank you, John.
I can add you to the speakers list so that we can get you there.
Thank you, Vice President Town. I will now move on to Alexander. Alexander Air, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm going to be yielding my time to Cannon, but before that, I just want to say really quick that I know everyone here wants to deal with the issue of systemic racism. And we're only debating about what is the most effective method of going about that and what's the most effective organization to go through to that. So I think it would be inappropriate for any further personal accusations to be flown around about the motives of councils. I will now yield my time to Cannon Sharn.
Thank you, Mr. Air. Madam Speaker, I would like to amend the stance we have. I would like, instead of the current stance we have, I would like to say, "Be resolved that the executive, in consultation with RACE and ESE, shall revise the stated advocacy stance with greater focus on campus and regional police and their impact on students, ensuring that going forward, that RACE's appointed coordinators be the spokesperson on this matter, and that internal funding committee allocate funds for part-time support for RACE and the VP Education in the pursuit of advocacy on this topic. And be for the result, prior to any further public statements on this matter from WUSA executives, further holistic research shall be conducted and consulted from students." I'm going to copy this in the chat so everyone can read it. Just give me a second, please.
Thank you, Counselor. I would like to remind everyone that because we now have an amendment on the floor, I have paused the main speaking order, and you can add yourself to a speaking order to discuss the amendment to the main motion.
Sorry about that, Madam Speaker.
Please mute your microphone, Counselor Sharma. Beginning with the speakers list on the amendment to the main motion, I will start with Vice President Town. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With respect to Counselor Sharma and his intentions, I would like to encourage counselors to vote against this motion. The purpose of the motion that I brought to council today is to engage in government advocacy. RACE has already been preparing to do significant work and developing an advocacy strategy specifically related to campus police. The topic at discussion today is with respect to external advocacy to the provincial government regarding provincial, regional, and municipal police services. So while I respect Counselor Sharma's points, and I think that it is very important that RACE is involved in these conversations, I would like to ensure counselors that RACE and our AVP Equity have been involved in the conversations of this provincial-facing advocacy from the beginning, and they will continue to be involved in any related advocacy efforts. Thank you.
I will now move to the RACE service. So I see you have two minutes.
Yeah, so I wanted to respond to two different points. One was, I think it was at this point that every council is interested in eliminating systemic racism. I think that's incorrect. I think that was true, this entire debate wouldn't be happening, because it was a point of wanting to address the issue of systemic racism on campuses. The idea of making just a face, again, recognizing that many people have already figured out, this is just a letter. We cannot do anything else. WUSA is literally just writing a letter that says that we stand behind defunding the police. This is not money. This is not resources. It's a letter. And the fact that this letter-writing has taken three hours and multiple BIPOC folk to state their truth, not feeling validated and silent, is beyond ridiculous. So no, I don't think counselors here support systemic racism. I think counselors here want to have the privilege of taking their much, you know, not having any lived experience, frankly, to say, "Oh, no, but we don't really know if this is an issue." And to my point earlier, again, please educate yourself before you come to this discussion. You're correct. All of you have a right to speak on your constituents, but go actually use Google and the resources offered to you and your constituents before you take a stance. The second point I want to make is, again, the way this procedure is stated and the way that, like, it's set up that in the chat, we can't actually have any discussion, the fact that all at-large members have to go through this very lengthy process to say anything, recognizing that the at-large members are the few people in this chat that actually have lived experience, I think is also beyond ridiculous. And we should be having a discussion on why that's true. I want to point out that Victoria, that Celine, that Kira, and a lot of other fantastic people have taken the time out of their day to be here and state their perspective and are continuously being dismissed. And I think that's beyond ridiculous also. Lastly, to Cannon's point, and I apologize if I mispronounced that. No, I disagree with your notion completely. RACE is an unpaid, under-resourced service. We are not going to be doing more advocacy. As somebody who has been a coordinator for four terms, I do not stand behind a motion that puts me on the front line of doing unpaid work when there should be an office and a group of people doing this, okay? If this is the stance of council, RACE is excusing itself. We are not taking this on. There is no consultation in here with RACE if you are making a statement on the behalf of my organization without actually asking me what I want. Done? Amazing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now move on to Counselor Hunt.
Thank you, Abby. I have been involved in WUSA for several years now, and I have voted for countless motions. And never have I ever been, had my character questioned for the things I have to say. I will have lengthy debates on policy with my colleagues, and then we will go out after that and enjoy ourselves, because we know that we have the best intentions for WUSA and for all the students. Never has a colleague questioned my character and... What is going on? I'm out.
Counselor Sharma, you have two minutes.
Madam Speaker, I would like to respond directly to RACE. Them assuming what I have gone through is showing their privilege, they don't know my personal experiences, the person of color as someone has been, and I would like this not to be noted in the minutes if possible. Someone has been sexually assaulted and has gone through the process. Assuming that it's only you who has gone through that process is really unfair and not at all what a service who supports inclusive reading and is fighting for this should be doing. Secondly, I would like to point out that RACE might be unpaid volunteers, but their coordinators are starting to get paid starting this year. And they are getting paid higher amount than our other part, a lot of our commercial operation part-time staff, because the GM and the student council approved that, and we saw the work that you and the amount of effort it goes into doing advocacy. So we approved that higher wage for them too. And in my motion, I literally said that I think if RACE cannot, as unpaid volunteers, do the job, we are asking IFC to provide money to hire part-time staff who can do that for them. So the point that unpaid volunteers should not be doing this is completely irrelevant here, because we are providing the resources to do that as not unpaid volunteers. Thank you.
That exhausts the speaking list on the amendment to the main motion. I will now copy the motion into the, oh, sorry, there's something in the chat. I will now copy the motion as amended into the chat for us to vote. And then we will move back to the main motion. So I'll remind, or I guess Cannon, you're the mover. I take Alex as the seconder. Or Alex isn't a counselor. I'll need a seconder. I'll take Counselor Schwartz as the seconder. Cannon, sorry. There's a point of information, and then Cannon, I'll allow you to speak. Victoria, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, perhaps this is something that I missed. Maybe it happened in the chat, but I was wondering, when was anyone's character being questioned? Because perhaps, I mean, I don't think that anyone was specifically called racist, but yes, we can all say racist things. And we can all say things that are ignorant, but I don't know if anyone here has been called that specifically. And so I don't agree with the points of order and the various suggestions that that was the case. But if someone could correct me if possible, that would be great. Thank you.
Cannon, I'll allow you to directly respond, but then I would like to vote on the amendment to the main motion, so we can move back to the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. President Shi, I guess you missed in the chat, people have been called centrists or whenever someone is making a comment which was not in line with people, like, people who are here, they have been made slight comments about them, such as, "Oh, so like, the lives of Black people don't matter." While it might not be calling them directly racist, it does imply that, and it is a sad day when this is happening at a WUSA council meeting. And I totally agree with Speaker Hunt, or Deputy Speaker Hunt, sorry. Madam Speaker, I would also like to motion for a secret ballot.
Counselor Sharma, I'm just going to allow someone to directly respond, and then I will create the secret ballot. Or we will vote on the motion for a secret ballot. Guy Brodsky, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary or Madam Speaker. I think that it's a sad day that this has to be such a debate. And the question of whether it is part of WUSA's remit and whether this all affects students, it's not up for debate. As I've said before, you've heard it from multiple people in this chat that this is, and I don't think that them providing criticism to the fact that that is trying to be, like, intellectually argued is an assertion that someone in the chat is racist. I don't think anyone was ever actually called names. I remember seeing the word "centrist" up there, but that is not, like, an appalling statement, I don't think. And I think that it's, yeah, yeah. So I would just also like to really quickly remind people to vote on the motion and not whether or not people have said mean things in the chat. Please keep it with a, yeah, just good luck voting, and please remember that this affects a lot of students on campus and not just constituents who might disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now go back to the motion to move the vote on the amendment to the main motion to a secret ballot. I have added the be resolved statement into the general council team's chat. Again, for counselors who are voting, thumbs up is in favor, surprise is against, and sad face is an abstention. You will have two minutes to vote. I'm going to give counselors 30 more seconds to vote in the chat. A reminder that if you are in favor, you will thumbs up. If you are against, you will surprise react. And if you are abstaining, you will sad react.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Megan.
Guy's comment in the chat is wholly inappropriate. During a vote, there is to be absolutely no discussion, particularly discussion about what people should vote is absolutely prohibited. I would request that the speaker be stricter on comments in the chat and consider this a warning for everyone that if people are continuing to speak in the chat and disrupting the flow of the meeting, that they shouldn't no longer be permitted to be present as they cannot follow the rules.
Thank you, Vice President Town. Again, I ask, we limit the chat to adding to the speaking order and time remaining. I would also, being mindful that we are approaching 5:00 PM, which is our scheduled adjournment time, I would like to motion that we extend adjournment to 6:00 PM, given that we still haven't had an opportunity to vote on the motion as amended or the main motion as it currently reads.
Point of order, Abby.
Go ahead, Megan.
I think you need to resolve the vote that we're in the middle of first.
You're correct. I need 30 more seconds to just review.
So noting that Abby's call for votes has elapsed, and it is currently tied. It is my understanding it rests with the speaker to place her vote.
Thank you, Vice President Town. I will be voting against the motion for a secret ballot, which means the motion fails, and we will be moving on to the amendment to the main motion as submitted by Counselor Sharma. I would also like to ask the Assembly, now it is 5:00 PM. I would like to motion to extend the meeting time to 6:00 PM to allow us more time to vote and continue discussion on the motion as amended and the main motion. Can I get a seconder?
Madam Speaker, there's already a motion on the table. Floor, you have to finish that before you do that.
You're correct. We'll move on to the motion as amended. One second, Cannon, I'm going to move over your motion into the team's chat. So the statement reads, be resolved, the executive in consultation with Raze and the Committee of Presidents or the Education Advisory Committee shall revise the stated advocacy stance with greater focus on campus and regional police and their impact on students, ensuring that going forward, that Raze's appointed coordinators be the spokespersons on this matter, and that the Internal Funding Committee allocate funds for part-time support for Raze in the VP education and the pursuit of advocacy on this topic. And be it further resolved prior to any further public statements on this matter, WUSA executive, from the WUSA executive, further holistic research shall be conducted in consultation with students. You can now, if you are a voting counselor, move over to the general chat. Thumbs up if you are in favor of the motion as amended. Surprise react if you are against, and sad react if you are abstaining. I have set a timer to allow counselors 30 seconds to cast their vote. 30 seconds is now up. The amendment to the main motion fails. We will now move on to, we will now move back to the main motion. But I would ask before we begin voting on the main motion, if we could extend, if I could motion to extend this meeting to 5:30 to allow us more time to vote and have discussion on the main motion before adjournment. President Heimers has seconded that motion. I will now add, be it resolved that, be resolved that the adjournment time of this meeting is extended to 5:30 PM to the chat. And counselors can now move over to the general chat to vote. I'll remind that thumbs up is in favor, surprise is against, and sad is an abstention. Counselors, you have 15 more seconds to vote to extend adjournment to 5:30 PM. Motion passes. We will be adjourning at 5:30 PM. I will now move back to the main motion. Cannon, would you like to speak?
Abby, was Cannon next on the speaking order? I believe we were interrupted.
Oh, sorry, you're correct. We have to move back to the main speaking order now. So I will now allow Samir Zumat to speak. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Abby. My name is Samir. I'm a Senator-at-large. First of all, I'd like to thank the executives for bringing this issue to council for discussion rather than making a unilateral decision on behalf of the entire student body. I've been quietly listening and observing this discussion and believe that both sides here have a lot of common ground, and ultimately, both have good intentions in heart to protect student interests. In my personal opinion, I did not elect any of our student creps to make any such political statements without our consultation, even if it is only a letter on our behalf, especially given that there has not been sufficient research done that would allow us to ensure that student safety will not be jeopardized as a result of this. I think this is a crucial time in WUSA's history, and I urge our elected counselors not to make any rash decisions that could potentially damage WUSA's reputation, future leaders, and ultimately diminish student voice in the future. Let us take the time to do the proper research. Let us have civil discussions. You know, maybe I'll end up being wrong, but that's okay. Let us get to that point. Let us ask students for their input, and then let us find the best way to push for effective change. Also, please let us not offend each other or question people's character. I think we have to be aware of the way we communicate and ask ourselves if it will achieve our goal or simply hurt other students' feelings and create divide. I know this is a very emotional issue, but working together by keeping it civil and having rational debate is what will get us across the finish line. So once again, thank you, execs and all the counselors for your time and all of your hard efforts on representing us. And I wish us all the best of luck on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I will now move on to Counselor Sharma. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to let Counselor Dong go.
Are you yielding your time to Counselor Dong?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
All right, Counselor Dong, go ahead.
Hello, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Whereas student input has not been fully taken account in this year, whereas this is a controversial initiative from WUSA within the student body based on perceptions of the best way to benefit students, be it resolved that WUSA conducts a plebiscite on what actions students would like WUSA to take in this circumstance, where a plebiscite is a non-binding referendum. I can pop it into the chat.
Please put that in the chat. Can I get a seconder on this motion? Seconded by Stephanie Yeo-Mao. Sorry about that. The motion reads, whereas student input has not been fully taken into account, whereas this is a controversial initiative from WUSA within the student body based on perceptions of the best way to benefit students, be it resolved, WUSA conducts a plebiscite on what actions students would like WUSA to take in this circumstance, moved by Catherine Dong, seconded by Stephanie Yeo-Mao. I will now move this motion into the general council teams for vote. Again, for counselors, thumbs up is in favor, surprise is against, and sad is an abstention.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Will we be having debate on the motion to amend?
Agree. Thank you, Megan. Yes, I will now open the speaking order for motion to amend. Stephanie, go ahead.
Point of order, Madam Speaker.
Yes, sorry. Catherine, would you like to speak to this motion?
Also, do we have a seconder?
Yes, Stephanie is the seconder.
No, I would not like to speak to this motion. I think that it speaks for itself in terms of being able to best represent what our students actually want from us here and what would be best for WUSA to do.
Stephanie is the seconder. Would you like to speak?
Yeah. I mean, understanding that referenda take a lot of time and that there's been complaint of referring things to referenda, that's something that I totally acknowledge. But at the same time, I think that in conversations that have been going on about Black Indigenous students' ability to kind of voice their opinions, given kind of the strenuency of Robert's Rules of Order, intermixed with the need that we need a structured kind of way to make sure that people have a dedicated time to speak, where there aren't distractions going on, where people aren't talking over each other. Like, clearly balancing those two needs has not really worked out. And given that students are... Some of the conversations here are becoming a little bit ad hominem that I would prefer individual students be given the right to vote on this motion as individuals. I think that in terms of counselors and presidents voicing the opinions of students, that the consultation that we've been making, like, it isn't being taken seriously or like, there's just concerns about consultation, the validity of it, who's allowed to speak and whatnot. So much that's affecting this that I think it might just be better off leaving it off to this. I don't necessarily like it, per se, but I think acknowledging all these things is the best course of action.
Thank you, Counselor. I will now give the time to Nada. Would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So I just want to bring up the point specifically about saying that this is a controversial initiative. Again, from the ample amount of research that's been put into this main motion that was brought forward by Vice President Town. And again, I stress that there has been an ample amount of research for folks who think that this is a empty claim, quote unquote. Yeah, so to say that this is a controversial initiative... it goes against what we are advocating for, which is Black Indigenous lives and their safety. So in this case, this is not a controversial issue. This is a human rights issue. So yeah, I'll just leave that right there. And yeah, okay.
Thank you, Vice President. Counselor Sharma, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I would like to reply to Vice President Nara's point, it not being a controversial decision. The actual definition of controversial is giving rise or likely to give rise to public disagreement, which it already has. There is a lot of disagreement about this at this council meeting. There has been a lot of disagreement on this on other social media platforms. So calling it not controversial is not only misleading, but it's actually wrong. Secondly, I think having democracy basically means giving everyone a voice. And a plebiscite does help us with that and also make sure that council is not making a decision which majority of students might not support. So this is one of the best ways to go about this. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
President Shi, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. I am against the idea of a referendum. We would literally be holding a referendum, which as Counselor Yeo-Mao did already propose, did already suggest that it would take a disproportionate amount of time compared to what the action actually is, which is a letter. A letter that is supporting the safety of our students and their ability to perform academically. And regarding following Robert's Rules of Order, I would argue actually that our counselors also have not respected Robert's Rules of Order and in past meetings have not respected Robert's Rules of Order, but this has never been an issue until now. And so I do not think that is a valid reason to go to referendum. And in fact, I wholly oppose this. Thank you.
Aisha, would you like to speak? You have two minutes.
Yes. I think Victoria made several good points that I agree with, but it was basically the point that the idea of this referendum and getting further proof is silencing and ignoring all the proof that's already been provided. There is a lot of research, as we keep saying, not only about why defunding the police is important, but just the fact that a letter saying that we defund the police is not going to put WUSA's funding in threat. As Matt also pointed out earlier, if we're talking about from the perspective of majority, not everything WUSA does benefits everyone. You take on issues depending on which parts of your student body need that advocacy support. Advocacy generally is marginalized folk, right? Because it's the recognition that someone at someone is having an issue because of different identity points, and so we're supporting that. So I think the perspective A of saying, while not all students have been taken into account, again invokes the issue of its policing of BIPOC students, Black and Indigenous in particular. Those are the voices we need to account for. Others are not important. And counselors, I think it's amazing that you want to account for what your constituents are saying, but please recognize all of your pro-village and what you're able to say. Like I've said before, go back and ask your constituents what they want, recognizing that the voices that should be centered are Black and Indigenous. Because if you want to center all voices, then you're taking a stance of all lives matter and that defeats the purpose of not just this letter, but any discussion around policing and who it affects. So I just want you to consider that point as we go forward. And I agree that there's no point in taking more time to make a letter. It's four paragraphs. It's not going to hurt anyone. Yeah.
Thank you. I will now call on Counselor Sharma. You have two minutes.
Sorry about that, Madam Speaker. I was just going to say, if this is just about sending a letter, then it basically is what a lot of students are saying online, is that WUSA is just doing this for show. I'm sorry, then I will definitely not support it. If the only reason for this stance is just to send a letter to provincial government, I would rather read your research-based, collect research-based data and actually come with a plan to help this and not just send out a letter, which is just, in my opinion, just for show. Thank you. That's all I have to say on this topic. And sorry, actually, I have one more point. To the point President Shi and Counselor Yeo brought up about referenda, that it takes a lot of time. If the executives in council really is, which I'm seeing that a lot of us passionate about this, a statement could be written, a referendum statement could be written by the end of the week and we could have it online on our website by that time. So I don't think it takes that long if people actually want to get this done fast enough. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I will now take Guy Brodsky. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to be really quick. I think that since this issue has been brought to mainstream media attention with the death of George Floyd, we've pretty much been in quarantine. It's been the past few months. I think that if people do not feel as informed as they should be by now, I don't think that more time is going to actually make them more informed. I also think that on the part of counselors who don't feel as informed, we have research. Many people have mentioned there's been references, there's been reading lists. And I think that the people who do feel informed and the people that who have been doing a whole lot of research on this, such as our VP Ed, such as our RACE coordinators, think that it is a very appropriate issue. As Aisha said earlier, a referendum, like I don't think that something that doesn't actually affect the entire student body should necessarily be something that should be sent to referendum. And I think that, like Matthew mentioned earlier about cycling, I don't think that having advocacy for bike lanes in the region is something that the entire student body should have necessarily voted on, and we didn't do it like that. I think that putting this to referendum delays important work that needs to be done now. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on Counselor Yeo-Mao. You have the floor.
Yeah, so I feel like we're on some level conflating caution with the motion proposed by Meghan to be about not believing that police brutality occurs, conflating it as not believing that, you know, that this is not the what's being proposed by her is not the best course of action. And I don't really, at least personally, and with the other folks that I'm speaking to, who are a little bit worried about the direction that this thing is going in. It's not about that. It's what's the best way to proceed as an organization to engage in advocacy on this matter? Because there's a whole lot of factors kind of going on. And it's been really hard to have a conversation on, okay, what's the best way to proceed as an organization when we keep we're constantly speaking over each other and it's really difficult. And if it's going to be like this, then I think it's better off being left as a referendum. It's been so divisive within this conversation so far and on some level fairly unproductive. And I feel like I'm emotionally exhausted. Other people are emotionally exhausted. I feel like that's a mutual thing. If that doesn't represent you, then my apologies. But yeah, at this point, I see it as a happy medium in terms of it. Like there, it is controversial in that it's been stretched out for so long. But yeah, so I hope you consider that.
Thank you, counselor. We've exhausted the, we've exhausted the speaking order. I will now bring the amendment to the motion to a vote. I'll read it again for counselors. "Whereas student input has not been fully taken into account, whereas this is a controversial initiative from WUSA within the student body based on perceptions of the best way to benefit students, be it further resolved that WUSA conducts a plebiscite on what actions students would like WUSA to take in this circumstance." I'll remind counselors that if you are voting, in favor is thumbs up, against is surprise, abstention is a sad face. I have set a timer to give counselors thirty more seconds to vote. Thirty seconds is over. The motion fails. We will now move back to the main motion. Which means that we'll resume the main speaking order. In the interest of time, I will be closing the main speaking order. And I will now move on to Chanel Leo.
Hello. Can you hear me? I think my mic's off.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. This is going to be very quick, but I think just relating to some comments made earlier, I do agree that this may not be the best steps moving forward to help solve the issue. However, I did want to point out that it is a good first. I think, as mentioned by many people on this call, there has been a lot of research, not only presented in this call, but a lot of research that is available to us and resources for us to educate ourselves on this topic. And I think that having a referendum may not be the best thing right now, just for time efficiency. So I would like to point out that I think that while this may not be the best movement or best action to help this issue, I think it is a great first step. And I think it definitely would benefit us and to have a letter sent out rather than not have a letter and not talk about anything and wait till the right time to act comes upon us.
Thank you. I will now take Counselor Yeo-Mao. You have two minutes.
Can you remove me from the speaker list? I forgot what I was going to say.
Thank you. I will now move to President Wong.
Thank you. Originally, I wanted to just say thank you for President Shi, Shi and Chanel, Chanel's comments. I understand how and I agree that just because something didn't happen for one group doesn't mean we shouldn't advocate for another group. Due to the complexity.
Is now exiting.
Sorry. Due to the complexity and clearly divided right now within my constituents in my caucus, as well as my society members. And I would like to be noted on the minute that I, as president of MatSoC, would be voting in abstain or abstaining from voting on the main motion at hand because I have received comments from both sides of the argument and I believe in abstain is the best reflection of what my society members would want. Thank you.
Thank you, President Wong. I will now move to Vice President Towne.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Respectfully, I'd like to disagree with some of the comments that have been raised regarding research consultation and the notion that this action is for show. I think that the seventeen citations in the presentation that I put together are a great start for some of the research. And I did try to focus that research on things that were relevant to Canada. Certainly, if you expand your scope, there is significantly more peer-reviewed research papers that you can look to regarding this issue. I would also like to note that the executive have been doing dedicated consultation with our Black students who are the members and constituents that are most affected by this issue. And finally, I would like to note that this letter is one aspect of WUSA's response to anti-Black racism, anti-digenous racism and racism in general. Racial equity is one of the key pillars on our executive action plan for this year. And the executive have been working closely with students of color, BIPOC students in particular, to figure out what our advocacy plan is on this topic. So I encourage counselors to vote in favor to allow us to take this step, which has come first because of the government raising this conversation and to continue to support the executive in fulfilling our action plan and working to address anti-Black racism on our campus and beyond.
Thank you, Vice President. I will now move on to Counselor Dong.
Hi, sorry, I'm not sure when I put myself on the speaking list.
This is the speaking list for the main motion. So it would have been before the various amendments. Would you like to remove yourself from the speaking list?
Yes, please.
I'll now move on to Vice President Abulnaga. Nara, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everything that Meghan said and again, reiterate that there is ample amount of research that was done before this motion came to council. And I encourage you to do your own research at your own time. But in terms of what the executives have done in terms of research, what the AVP Equity has done and what RACE has done, RACE coordinators, we've been all working on getting the information to be as accurate as possible for all of you. So again, I want to reiterate that we have done the research to be able to come today with this motion to present to council.
President Hammers, you are the last on the speaking order. You have two minutes. You may speak.
Thank you. There's been some discussion today about how supporting the motion to send this letter will be damaging to WUSA's reputation. And I'd like to say that I think what will be damaging to WUSA's reputation and what is already serving to damage the reputation of council is the overwhelming refusal to understand that we really have to advocate for the students who have been speaking out about how policing impacts their education and safety. And the statement that this has not been researched only stands for those who seem to hold the opinion that this isn't a student issue about which WUSA shouldn't voice involvement. So I encourage counselors to vote in favor of taking.
Sorry, President Hammers. I just, there's a point of privilege. Go ahead, Cannon.
Madam Speaker, I will let the person currently speaking finish and then I'll speak after that. Thank you.
Great. Continue.
I was just finishing up by saying I encourage counselors to vote in favor of taking this step to support Black and Indigenous students of color. I think it's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Cannon, go ahead.
Madam Speaker, sorry. Madam Speaker, point of personal privilege, I think this meeting was done in a really bad way and calling people racist on Twitter accounts by UW Race because they don't agree with your viewpoint or are trying to make sure that a proper decorum of debate is being talked about is a sad day for this council. And I think we need to reevaluate how this meeting was done. And this should never be happening because if you're not following rules, which are set for everyone and not just for one side, then that is your privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Kira, point of order. Kira, would you like to speak? Or Victoria, would you like to speak?
Yeah, just a point of order. If possible, could the, could someone show me where an individual was called racist rather than perhaps the discussion and the intellectualized violence was called racist? Because it's, I think that we do have to take, we do have to understand that debating ideas is not, you know, it should not be taken as an ad hominem attack. And so I, I'm not sure if I missed it. So if someone could point that out either in the agenda or send me a direct quote, I would appreciate that a lot. And it would allow me to better understand the points of Counselor Sharma. And furthermore, as to the rules not being respected, again, this happened both sides. I do believe that replying to a breach of the rules is still a breach of the rules regardless of who started it. And so I do not believe that it's professional or fair to say that one side was, one side quote unquote, was doing something against the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shi. I will not be taking any further debate on this topic. I would like to move on to vote on the main motion, which is the reason that the meeting was called. I would, I guess, call the, sorry. I'm going to call the question. Can Meghan?
Yep.
Can you remind me, do we need a mover and a seconder to move forward?
No, we got a mover and a seconder at the beginning when we first read the motion.
Great. So I'm going to call the question. I'm going to read. I'm going to read the motion as it was presented to council. Then I will be adding the motion to the teams for vote. Whereas Executive Committee adopted a resolution and put forward the following quote to a newspaper. "Musa supports the reallocation of police funding towards programs with proven efficacy. We believe a shift in funding would support increased provision of social services to improve issues like mental health, addiction and homelessness. Musa is concerned about systemic inequities and their interplay with traditional police services. Especially for this reason, we stand behind the restructuring of current policing systems to incorporate de-escalation tactics, harm reduction programs and training to address inherent biases. Whereas the provincial government recently announced $6 million in funding for the proceeds of crime frontline police grant. Whereas there has been significant concerns with the current institution of policing as presented by the executive. Be it resolved that the Waterloo Undergraduate Student Association holds the following principles, concerns and recommendations. Principle: Public safety and wellbeing for students should be a key priority for the provincial government. Principle: Investment in social services has been shown to decrease the prevalence of nonviolent incidents currently handled by the police. Concern: Current strategies for the funding and operation of law enforcement have adverse dangerous impacts on marginalized individuals and communities. Concern: Current strategies for funding for law enforcement deprioritize funding available for proactive social services. Recommendation: The provincial government should allocate more funding to urgent response programs for nonviolent, for non-criminal events. Recommendation: The provincial government should allocate more funding for community-driven social services which act proactively to address concerns including crime, violence, homelessness, addiction, human trafficking, sexual violence and mental health. Recommendation: The provincial government should invest in efforts to investigate systemic issues with policing in Canada and work to address any and all identified issues within the institution of policing. I will also ask all councilors to not use the chat for personal conversations. Counselor Sharma, please do not use the chat for personal conversations. I will now be putting the main motion into the counselor teams. I will remind councilors that if you are in favor, you will thumbs up. If you are against, you will surprise react. And if you are in abstention, you will sad react. I have now set a timer for 30 more seconds for councilors to cast their vote. Another reminder that if you are in favor, you will thumbs up. If you are against, you will surprise react. And if you are abstaining, you will sad react. Voting has now closed. The motion passes. The final vote was fourteen versus twelve.
Abby?
Yes.
Twelve sad reacts. So that's twelve abstentions?
Sorry.
So in fact, it's unanimous.
Sorry. It passes unanimously. I apologize. That is fourteen in favor and twelve in abstention. Thank you, Meghan. I would now, noting that we have now finished all orders of business for today. I would like to motion to adjourn at 5:46 PM. Thank you, everyone. Or sorry, do I need a seconder? Meghan?
To adjourn, I think that we're past the, the past scheduled adjournment time. And having exhausted all business, you can simply adjourn the meeting.
Perfect. Then I will be adjourning the meeting at 5:46 PM. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
I'm just going to chime in here, guys, before I leave. I've been listening to this whole thing. I thought I was going to leave earlier. And all I can say is y'all really need to learn to speak with one another better. And, and that goes for everybody on the call because you know, and when someone says they feel personally attacked by something and someone else says, prove it, show me where, you know, there, there can be a listening of small things that go that way. I personally supported a lot of this. I spoke to some of the stuff earlier. And even still sitting here and listening to it was really hard to hear. And it was really, it just seemed caustic and toxic when in fact, I think a lot of the people on the line seem to agree with one another a lot more than they realized. You know, I'm going to use, for, for instance, the motion on the whether or not RACE should be doing something. I think Cannon explicitly included a, a statement about paying the, the coordinators part-time and starting it early. But then the, the focus became, well, nobody's paid and that's exploiting volunteer labor. And he, I mean, I'm sure he agrees with that. I mean, I, if I'm reflecting back to when I was secretary for the Winter GM and those things were approved when Amanda put them forward, everybody voted for that. So I, I would just advise everyone to reflect a little bit on their own comments. And perhaps, you know, tensions and we're on the high with this. Let me finish what I'm saying. Thank you, Abby. And and maybe think about whether you owe anybody apology. And I think that goes for both sides. But, you know, congratulations to everyone that the motion passed. And I wish Musa good luck with their advocacy.